Good morning and welcome to the New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection. At this time, can everybody please silence your cell phones? If you wish to testify, please go up to the Sergeant-at-Arms desk to fill out a testimony slip, even if you already registered online. Written testimony can be emailed to testimony at council.nyc.gov. Once again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. At this time and going forward, no one is to approach today's. I repeat, no one is to approach today's. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good morning. I am City Council member Julie Menon, Chair of the Committee of Consumer and Worker Protection. I want to welcome all of you to today's hearing. First, I want to acknowledge my colleagues who are present, Councilmember Schulman, and I'll acknowledge additional colleagues as they join. Since the COVID-19 pandemic, the city's streetscape has been transformed by the proliferation of e-bikes, of mopeds, and other powered mobility devices. Although these devices have certainly expanded the ability for people to traverse the city, they've also driven exponential growth in deadly fires related to the lithium-ion batteries used to power these devices, as well as dangerous encounters between cyclists and pedestrians and these micro-mobility vehicles. The growth in e-bike and moped usage is fueled by a surge in demand for food delivery from third-party platforms. Large delivery zones and pay incentives to complete deliveries quickly have driven delivery workers to use e-bikes, e-scooters, and powered mobility devices instead of regular bicycles. The council has passed legislation to provide better conditions for restaurants that use third-party platforms, to provide better working conditions for third-party delivery workers, and to facilitate the safe use of powered mobility devices by delivery workers. Today, we will hear a number of bills that relate to third-party food delivery and powered mobility devices. I'm just going to list and briefly describe these bills. First, Prop. 0030A, sponsored by Councilmember Felice, would establish safety standards for powered bicycles and powered mobility devices when used for food delivery services, grocery delivery services, and businesses using bicycles for commercial purposes. Mobility devices used for delivery could be provided by the company or by the delivery worker, but could not be provided at the food delivery worker's expense as a term of their employment. Second, Prop. 00972, sponsored by Councilmember Powers, would require all third-party food delivery services to verify that the mopeds used by their food delivery workers are properly registered prior to their use. Third, Prop. 00715, sponsored by Councilmember Schulman, would make third-party food delivery services responsible for ensuring that their food delivery workers operate e-bikes in accordance with the laws concerning the operation of bicycles on sidewalks and at intersections. Fourth, Prop. 00762, sponsored by Councilmember Salamanca, would establish exemptions for third-party delivery services from the limits on fees charged to restaurants. In 2021, this council passed a law to cap the fees third-party food delivery services could charge restaurants. That cap protects restaurants from exorbitant fees imposed by delivery services, which was critical during the pandemic and continues to be vital to this day. Prop. 00762 would amend this law by allowing third-party delivery services to increase their fees for restaurants that choose to pay more for additional services, such as marketing in the app. We are hearing, as well, three bills introduced by Councilmember Abreu that were prompted by third-party apps' responses to the historic minimum pay legislation passed by the council. After the minimum pay standard went into effect, some of the platforms changed their apps to make it harder for consumers to tip their workers. Platforms have also not been transparent with their workers about which method they are using to calculate pay. Prop. 00737 would establish gratuity standards for food delivery workers. Prop. 00738 would require third-party food delivery services that solicit gratuities to do so before or at the same time an online order is being placed. And lastly, Prop. 00859 would require third-party food delivery services and third-party courier services to disclose the pay method, display a running tally of a food delivery worker's working time, and provide food delivery service workers with an itemized pay statement for each pay period. I look forward to hearing from everyone here in terms of their testimony on these bills, and I will now turn it over to Councilmember Schulman to make her opening statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Menon. Good morning. I'm proud to speak to you about Prop. 00715. This important legislation seeks to enhance the safety and accountability of food delivery companies, requiring third-party food delivery services to be responsible for the safe operation of electric food delivery bicycles. As you know, electric bicycles have become a crucial part of our food delivery infrastructure. However, this convenience must not come at the expense of public safety. Right now, delivery workers are essentially incentivized for speed, and their top priority is quickly completing their next delivery. This often results in driving recklessly, often putting the lives of pedestrians at risk, as well as compromising their own safety. Prop. 00715 specifically requires food delivery companies to ensure that their delivery workers operate electric bicycles in compliance with Sections 19-176 and 19-195 of our city code, which govern bicycle use on sidewalks and at intersections. This bill mandates that these companies accept financial liability for any civil penalties resulting from violations of these sections while workers are engaged in deliveries. Additionally, the legislation provides an important safeguard for delivery workers and companies alike. Workers must notify their respective third-party delivery service of any fines within 10 days of issuance. In turn, it offers an affirmative defense for companies if they were not properly notified of a violation by their delivery worker. This bill is not just about assigning responsibility, it is about creating a safer environment for all New Yorkers, pedestrians, cyclists, and delivery workers. Beholding companies accountable, we ensure that they take an active role in promoting safe riding practices and mitigating risks associated with the increasing rise of use of electric bicycles. I urge my fellow council members to support this legislation, recognizing that it strikes a necessary balance between fostering innovation in our food delivery sector and maintaining the safety and well-being of our community. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. I'll call on additional council members for their opening statements as they join, so I'm now going to turn it over for the administration to testify. We'll be hearing testimony from Carlos Ortiz, Assistant Commissioner for External Affairs at DCWP, Elizabeth Wagner, Deputy Commissioner of OLPS at DCWP, and Andrew Schwank, Associate General Counsel. I'm going to turn it over to Committee Counsel to administer the affirmation.
Please raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee, and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
I do.
You may begin.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Menon and Councilmember Schulman, members of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection. My name is Carlos Ortiz, and I am joined by my colleagues Elizabeth Wagner and Andrew Schwank. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today on Instructions 0030A, 00715, 00737, 00738, 00762, 00859, and 00972 relating to delivery worker gratuities and pay transparency, delivery fee caps, and ensuring app responsibility with respect to street safety. Since the start of the administration, DCWP has helped deliver more than $600 million into the pockets of New Yorkers. We provide fundamental consumer and worker protections and financial empowerment programming to New Yorkers. We strive to ensure that consumers who have been deceived or exploited have recourse, that workers have a passionate defender of their rights, and that all New Yorkers have the support they need to improve their financial health. Just over a year ago, Mayor Adams announced the nation's first-of-its-kind minimum pay rate for app-based restaurant delivery workers, the most significant advancement of workers' rights in New York City in the 21st century. Ahead of implementation, DCWP conducted a comprehensive study of the industry, considered thousands of comments received from food delivery workers, apps, advocates, restaurants, researchers, elected officials, and members of the public when he was studying this historic rate. We continue to collaborate closely with key advocates and stakeholders across the space. Delivery workers are essential workers for New York City. They have braved harsh weather conditions, harmful wildfire smoke, and even the pandemic to ensure New Yorkers are fed. Thanks to their incredible organizing and determination, tens of thousands of workers have now seen their weekly pay double, with their combined annual earnings on track to increase by over $775 million this year. This administration will continue to stand shoulder-to-shoulder with delivery workers and ensure their fundamental rights to fair and dignified pay are protected. Moving to today's bills, I would like to start off by commending the council, and specifically Councilmember Abreu, for recognizing a key issue that delivery workers are facing since certain major apps made changes to make it harder to tip delivery workers. We strongly support Introductions 00737 and 00738, which would require third-party food delivery service apps to give customers the option to leave a gratuity during an order transaction and include a suggested gratuity option of 10%. Before apps began paying the minimum pay rate in early December 2023, they generally made tipping a delivery worker a simple process, giving consumers the option to tip during the order transaction. However, after they began paying the minimum pay rate, two of the three most-used apps removed the option for a consumer to add a tip when placing an order. As a result, delivery workers' tips received on those apps have decreased dramatically, by $85 million in total, since the apps changed their tipping options. Conversely, other apps, including one of the three most-used apps, continued to allow tipping when placing an order, and while the average tips on orders placed on those apps did decrease slightly, workers are receiving substantially higher tips on those apps. To us, this speaks to the fact that New Yorkers, when given an option, recognize the incredibly difficult jobs these workers perform and choose to tip them. As we understand the intent of these bills, they will require apps to restore to consumers the option they previously had to tip workers when placing an order, we recommend changes to the bill text to make clear that apps must offer consumers these tipping options. We are eager to engage in the legislative process as soon as possible to finalize this legislation to best support delivery workers in our city. Instruction 00859 would require third-party food delivery services and third-party courier services to provide delivery workers with sufficient information on their pay calculations. We are fully supportive of clear pay transparency for workers, as well as this legislation. The apps are required to report aggregate monthly pay information to DCWP so that we can monitor compliance, but apps have not been transparent with workers themselves about their pay calculations. Workers should have full information about how their pay is calculated so they are not left with questions about an app's pay structure. We believe this legislation will help ensure this happens and will make it easier for advocates to educate workers on the minimum pay rate. Councilmember Salamanca's bill, Instruction 00762, would amend the current fee caps for third-party food delivery services. The caps on fees that delivery apps can charge restaurants were first created by the council during the COVID-19 pandemic and were later made permanent under Local Law 103 of 2021. Currently, delivery apps can only charge a restaurant a total of 23% of an order in fees, broken down as follows: up to 15% for delivery fees, up to 3% for transaction fees, and up to 5% for other fees. Instruction 00762 would increase the cap on other fees from 5% to 25%, potentially allowing delivery apps to charge restaurants up to 43% of an order in fees. As an enforcement agency, DCWP will enforce the fee caps at the limits mandated by local law, and I would also like to note that the current fee caps are subject to ongoing litigation. Lastly, Instruction 00715 would require food delivery companies to be responsible for ensuring that their workers who use micro-mobility devices follow appropriate traffic laws. Instruction 0030A, which the Department of Transportation previously testified on in January, would establish new requirements for businesses using a bicycle for commercial purposes, such as third-party food delivery, grocery delivery, and courier services. This includes the requirement that any powered mobility device, such as an e-bike, used by a worker on behalf of such businesses, meet certain safety certification standards. Instruction 00972 would require third-party food delivery services to verify the registration of mopeds used by delivery workers. The administration is committed to ensuring that micro-mobility devices are used safely on our streets. Along with our colleagues at DOT, we are working on a comprehensive policy review of how micro-mobility delivery is regulated in New York City. We believe it is vital to address the current situation holistically with an approach that tackles both street safety priorities and workers' rights. Each of these three bills addresses issues that will inform vital components of that unified approach. A key point that DOT and DCWP would like to stress is that delivery apps have a responsibility to ensure that workers have access to and use safe equipment, and that workers are not compelled into unsafe riding practices because of dangerous demands made of them by those same apps. For example, we have heard reports from workers that apps may penalize or deactivate them if they do not deliver orders within a delivery app's mandated timeframe, despite there being obstacles such as traffic, restaurant delays, or route issues that are outside of a worker's control. The perverse incentives flowing from apps' unrealistic delivery times could be a major contributing factor to some of the unsafe practices we are observing in our city today. And another example I'd like to share is when workers receive app orders while in transit, and if they don't respond to these app orders, they are penalized subsequently. Ultimately, workers are compelled into these situations because the deactivation can be financially devastating for them and their families. One final point underscores DOT and DCWP's holistic approach. Instruction 0030A would bring street and device safety protections to grocery delivery workers in addition to restaurant delivery workers. This is an important step in the right direction from a street safety perspective, but it should go even further for the issues DCWP enforces and has responsibility for. As discussed in the administration's blueprint for economic recovery, workers who deliver all types of consumer goods would benefit significantly from minimum pay and other protections. So, as we work on all this legislation together, the administration wants to ensure it addresses the root causes of unsafe riding, that it does not have unintended consequences on workers, and that each bill works in concert to develop better policy outcomes for New Yorkers. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on these bills and for your collaboration with our efforts to support working New Yorkers. We look forward to answering any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. I'm now going to turn it over to Councilmember Salamanca for his opening statement.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning to all, and good morning to you and the panel. I would like to speak on my bill, Intro 00762. Intro 00762 is a comprised solution that is the result of months of collaboration with New York City restaurants, the council, food delivery platforms, and other key stakeholders in New York City's delivery ecosystem. Intro 00762 offers restaurants more flexibility to opt into supplemental marketing and promotional plans, which are critical for small businesses trying to compete against national chains. This bill ensures fairness and transparency in the industry and protects restaurants from exploitation while helping them attract new customers on their terms. Intro 00762 protects businesses by prohibiting third-party apps from purchasing restaurant names for advertising purposes without consent, while also guaranteeing restaurants' ability to set prices for items ordered through third-party apps compared to in-person or direct orders. A benefit to restaurants, Intro 00762, gives restaurants an option to include physical marketing materials with orders, enhancing in-house advertising efforts in the process. Furthermore, Intro 00762 allows restaurants greater flexibility to obtain restaurant-tailed marketing services provided by third-party platforms to expand outreach to new customer bases. Intro 00762 also protects consumers by maintaining both the 15% cap on delivery fees, as well as the 3% cap on credit card processing fees. A common misconception is that Intro 00762 guarantees that all restaurants will be listed and discoverable on third-party platforms regardless of whether they opt into additional marketing services. Lastly, this bill creates a level of government oversight by requiring the Department of Consumer Affairs and Worker Protection to conduct regular assessments of the industry to ensure rules and regulations are being followed. These measures are crucial for balancing the future success of all members of the delivery ecosystem: consumers, carriers, restaurants, and delivery platforms. This proposal strengthens from its previous version of Intro 00813 with input from the stakeholders, which has widespread support from small and independent restaurants throughout the city, and will provide some of the strongest restaurant protections in the country. I thank my colleagues, who have already co-sponsored Intro 00762, and look forward to working with the industry stakeholders to pass this piece of important legislation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and I'll now turn it over to Councilmember Abreu for his opening statement.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair. Thank you to the admin. Sorry I'm a little late. Just came back from a school graduation, but on my way here, I was paying attention to the testimony, and I'm very excited to see that the admin doesn't only support the intent of the bill, but you strongly support the bill. And every time when you find all your bills to be strongly supported by the administration, we're sending a message. And so, we're sending a message that we're standing up for our deliveristas, we're sending a message that we're standing up for working-class families. Intro 00738 would require that the tipping option be displayed at checkout, not after consumers have already received their orders, they close down the apps, and are chowing down. In response to their minimum wage agreement with deliveristas, delivery apps have retaliated by hiding the tip menu for consumers, knowing that deliveristas will lose out on meaningful earnings, and they have. Uber and DoorDash removed it, but Grubhub kept it. And as the testimony today by our Deputy Commissioner Ortiz, those apps that have kept the tipping option at checkout, like Grubhub, earnings and tips have been mostly on par with the tips that we have seen before the minimum wage went into effect. But for those apps that have removed the tipping at checkout, we're talking about $85 million. That is insanity, and that difference would make the difference for our working-class families. And that's why we're here today. Intro 00737 would require that the suggested minimums be set at 10%. It would only be suggested, is what I will say. $20 order, a $2 tip, I mean, come on now. And also, if you do not want to provide those $2 on a $20 order, when people are driving their orders during blizzard conditions or during times at which there's scorching weather like this heatwave today, then it is your option to not tip. But we want to provide that option because it makes it a lot more fair. And this comes at no cost to the app or the apps or the users, but it contributes to better consumer habits. Intro 00857 would require third-party food delivery services and third-party courier services to provide food delivery workers with standard information relating to their pay calculations. A crazy idea. We want to know how people's pay is getting calculated. We want to know their active time worked. For God's sake, is this something that we have to fight for through legislation? Any worker in this city should know their active time worked. They should know how their pay is getting calculated. And the fact that we're fighting these apps on this is insanity to me. It's insanity. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. Okay, we're going to go into questions for the administration. So, the administration had announced a number of months ago that you would be creating an Office of Sustainable Delivery. What is the status of that office?
Thank you for the question, Chairman Menon. As I mentioned in my testimony, we've been currently engaging with DOT to develop this comprehensive policy review. I also know that the mayor's office and the deputy mayor of operations have been working closely with central staff as well to identify the particular policies that this new body will work through, particularly as it relates to street safety priorities and workers' rights. I expect that we'll be working on that over the summer, and then we can have actual content for the council to look at in September, early fall.
Okay. I'm going to really urge the administration to move as expeditiously as possible on that. We really need that because right now, we're dealing with an alphabet soup of agencies on this, and there's no sort of one entity that has control over the myriad issues. So we really want to see that move forward as quickly as possible. What specific measures will be put in place to prevent e-bikes and mopeds from speeding on sidewalks and endangering pedestrians?
Well, I think, you know, something I really like to highlight is the fact that, you know, apps bear a certain responsibility here for promoting certain practices, and we need to make sure that any approach identifies their accountability in this. And what I really want to talk about, then, is arbitrary deactivations, unrealistic delivery times, contacting workers while they're in transit. I think these are some of the issues that we really need to address in a comprehensive policy review to ensure that workers are not compelled into unsafe practices. Additionally, I think I'd also just want to note again that we were certainly supportive of expanding the minimum pay rate to other industries that engage in delivery for independent contractors, and I think those pieces from a DOT and DCB perspective would be really important.
Okay. A number of questions on the legislation. I want to start with Intro 00762. So, I understand, obviously, there's active litigation, but what is the administration's position on Intro 00762?
Thank you, Chair. I think on the advice of the Law Department, I can't comment on for a position on the legislation. There is ongoing litigation. I can provide a status update of that, if that's helpful. Let me just say that the city had a motion to dismiss the litigation, but that was denied, and currently we're in a process of discovery and depositions, and hence why I can't provide further comment. I do want to take, I think Councilmember Salamanca's point is well taken. It's, as in the hearing last session and today's hearing, I think it's important to hear from stakeholders in this space, and I really would be encouraged to hear from restaurants, apps, delivery workers, all about the impacts of the fee cap.
Look, I understand there's active litigation, but I still think the administration can comment on the legislation, which is not subject to the litigation.
I think for us, the litigation is still outstanding. For us, we will enforce the fee caps wherever they're set, but in terms of resolving the litigation, I think that's the key question.
Okay. How many complaints has the administration received related to fee caps?
Thank you, Councilmember. We've received one single complaint about the fee caps since the law was put into place. That was a complaint received in 2022. It was successfully mediated by our office. It was a restaurant who alleged that one of the delivery apps had violated the credit card transaction fee cap, and through our mediation efforts, we were able to secure a return of over $500 to the restaurant to make that restaurant whole for the overcharge on the credit card transaction fee.
And how many violations have been issued?
No violations.
No violations, okay. And in terms of, you know, if you're concerned that increased fees could lead to restaurants losing access to their customers, how do you plan to mitigate the risk of reduced revenue for these businesses?
I don't think that's a concern that we've articulated, although if restaurants do feel that's a concern, I think this hearing is a perfect setting for them to share. Ultimately, I think for us, no matter where the fee caps are at, we'll make sure to communicate that proactively to restaurants and continue the engagement we've had with the app industry too, to ensure compliance with local laws.
And other than amending the fee cap, which is obviously the subject of Intro 00762, is there any additional support either your agency or SBS will be providing to restaurants to help them succeed?
Well, I think from, I guess, going into the other parts of our agency's work, you know, we do have a lot of programming that supports small businesses in our city. I like to think, for example, about Mayor Adams' expansion of our free tax prep program for self-employed New Yorkers. SBS is a key partner in that, and I know we always work to help educate small businesses on their responsibilities, and we'll continue doing that good work.
Moving on to Intro 00737, 0078, 00859, you indicated, as Councilmember Abreu noted, that you strongly support this legislation in terms of 00737. How many complaints have you received regarding restrictions on third-party food delivery service conduct?
Well, I think with respect to tipping in particular, we've received eight complaints for delivery workers related to tipping that's currently, as it relates to what's currently in local law. I will say, we have received a lot of complaints from folks about the changes that happen to the interfaces, albeit none of that is necessarily illegal right now. All this legislation would change that, so we don't have the clear numbers on that, but I think it's something that workers are talking about a lot and definitely have complaints about.
And how many violations have you issued on that subject?
We have not issued violations on the tipping subject because the issues that are present in this bill, it's not currently illegal to change the tipping interface.
Okay. And how many complaints have you received regarding the sale, lease, and rental of powered bicycles, powered mobility devices, and storage batteries for such devices?
This is with respect to Local Law 39, correct? So, we've received over 40 complaints on those, with respect to Local Law 39. I think since that law took effect in September of 2023, we've conducted close to 600 inspections, issued violations to close to 200 brick-and-mortars, as well as 25 online retailers as well.
And have you encountered challenges in terms of enforcing this local law?
No, I think this is, you know, this is the type of work that is really a bread and butter for our consumer protection team, being able to identify and proactively inspect locations. It was certainly a high priority for us when this law was in place, and additionally why we recommended so many amendments earlier this year, to increase penalties, to provide the city with ceiling authority for recidivist behavior. So, we're looking forward to those amendments taking effect in September for us.
And can you provide an update on the city's trade-in program that was established pursuant to Local Law 131?
Yes, Chair. So, that trade-in program is being managed by DOT. My understanding is they'll be promulgating rules in July, and they're looking to have registrants by the end of the year. and they're looking to have registrants by the end of the year for that program.
Okay, wonderful. I'm now going to turn it over to my colleagues for questions. First of all, Councilmember Salamanca? Okay, Councilmember Abreu.
Thank you, Chair. This is a question to admin. Are there any tweaks to the existing bills you would like to make?
So I think with respect to both of the bills concerning tipping, we want to make sure to close a loophole we see in the current text that would allow apps to continue to have the option to offer a tipping interface or not in the order process. We think it should be mandatory that apps offer the tipping interface before the order is placed.
Thank you, very helpful. DoorDash recently sent a communication to its workers stating that my bills, Intro 738, 737, would decrease the amount of orders that consumers make, thereby harming both restaurants and deliveristas. This is confusing to me, considering tipping is completely optional, whereas the New York City surcharges that the apps responded with are not optional. They were willing to push that cost onto consumers and restaurants as part of their business model and then remove tipping option at checkout to artificially and disingenuously keep the total cost down. Putting that aside, however, can you please speak to the data on the volume of orders apps have reported to the agency? And what differences were reported in terms of monthly deliveries made pre and post minimum wage taken effect?
Yes, I'm happy to. So we, as you know, we receive monthly reporting from the apps on a variety of topics that allow us to monitor compliance. That includes reporting on the total number of deliveries. And so we can compare the first quarter of 2023 to the first quarter of 2024. In other words, when there was no minimum pay rate, then compared to the first quarter of 2024, when there was a minimum pay rate. And what we see is an increase of 8%.
There's an increase?
That's right.
Not a decrease, or not even the same level, it's an increase?
That's right.
So is it fair to say that this notion that tipping at checkout would reduce the orders?
We see no reason to believe that that would occur if these bills were--
And that's an argument being made by Big Tech, just so you're aware. Okay. Then there was the argument that tipping, which was removing the tipping at checkout, which was done in retaliation, that that would impact, that that's something that they're bearing as a cost. Is it your understanding that the service charge is being done to fund the minimum wage?
That may be the case. What we're seeing in the data is that customers are actually paying less for delivery now under the minimum pay rate than they were previously, in part because of these tipping changes.
Councilmember, and I think, just to piggyback on that a bit, I really do appreciate the graph that we've been able to put in our testimony. I think that really showcases the issue that your bills are going after. And essentially, that New Yorkers, when given an option, do choose to tip. Again, this is all about options. And ultimately, you know, I think the minimum pay rate has been a major success. Pay is up, deliveries are up. Tipping is still a component of take-home pay, and we're just saying that let's make sure New Yorkers have an option here. So thank you very much for these bills.
And just so folks are also aware, that just because deliveristas got minimum wage, they didn't get everything under the sun. In fact, they're not getting minimum wage necessarily per hour. There was a story, and I've said this last night on Arrow Lewis. There was a story of a deliverista who worked from 6:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., worked eight hours and only made $63 because the minimum wage only applies to active time worked, from the moment you pick up the delivery to the moment you drop it off. But when you're doing call time, those resources aren't necessarily pulled evenly. And $63 for eight hours is poverty wages. If they had, in fact, been making minimum wage per hour, they would have made nearly three times the amount, somewhere around 180-something. That is what we're up against right now. And there's a lot of disingenuous arguments being made. And our job, I'm so grateful that the council and the administration is united on this issue. Thank you.
Wonderful. Councilmember Salamanca, some questions?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I will be brief. I understand that you're limited on what you can answer. But is the administration supportive of the revised bill now from 813 to 762?
I apologize, Councilmember Salamanca. Just on the advice of the law department, because of the litigation that the administration and the council are party to, I really can't comment on the legislation today. Although I am thankful for this setting, as we've had many settings over the past few years to discuss the fee caps and for stakeholders to provide feedback to.
An idea when the litigation will be completed?
It's hard to predict. I did mention earlier that we did file a motion to dismiss, but it was denied. And right now, we're in, I think, a process of discovery and depositions of key folks. So I don't really have a timeline I can share on specifics there.
I just want to point out certain keys on this new bill. You know, under the current law, the max that can be charged at restaurants is approximately 23%. That's broken down by 15% for delivery, 5% for marketing, and about 3% for order processing. Now, Intro 762 would merely raise the cap on fees for marketing services for those restaurants who desire to give their promo a boost. With that, I have no further questions since I understand you're limited on what you can answer on this bill. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll now turn it over to Councilmember Feliz.
Thank you, thank you so much, Chairman Menon, for this hearing and also to all my colleagues who have bills before this committee today. So a few questions on Intro 38. What's the administration's position on this bill?
Thank you, Councilmember Feliz. I think our position has not changed significantly from what DOT testified to in January. I believe that, or we believe that apps bear responsibility here to ensure that workers are have access to safe devices, are using safe devices, that they're not being compelled into unsafe riding practices. I think for us at DCBP, we're looking to work very closely with our colleagues at DOT to make sure we're developing a comprehensive policy to address street safety priorities, such as your bill, as well as worker rights components for us.
Thank you. And what are ways that the bill could be properly implemented? The bill would, of course, require that the apps provide an e-bike to workers. You all certified e-bikes to workers who don't have one. I know we're basically inventing the wheel. We would be the first in the entire country to create an important program like that. So what are ways that we could get this properly implemented? What are systems that still need some work so that we could be able to get this right?
Well, I know in January, DOT mentioned as a part of their implementation that they would consider aspects such as safe dispatch requirements, ensuring that workers are dispatched on safe devices, compliance planning and things like that, that the apps could report to them. I think these are some of the key components that DOT would work through, and we would certainly, through our experience in our own delivery side of the space, would be informative of that too.
Okay, is there, any tweaks that you would recommend for the bill? Or would you say, as written, we could move it forward, vote and pass it?
Well, I would say one thing that I think is important from the administration perspective, I mean, I think there are a number of bills, for example, in today's hearing, that have to deal with street safety issues, worker rights issues. I think for us, it's critical that these pieces all work together in a unified approach. Not even just thinking about, just thinking even definitionally, to make sure things are aligned, make sure that, just make sure that all these bills are working together. You know, I've certainly had experiences in other spaces where things can happen piecemeal, and I don't think that's what anybody wants here. And so our goal is to make sure that we have close coordination and collaboration with the council. I know the mayor's office, the deputy mayor of operations have been working closely with central staff on these issues. So I'm looking forward to developing this over the summer and having some content for the council into the early fall.
Perfect, thank you so much. And we look forward to continued conversations about this bill just to make sure we get it right. We're, again, inventing the wheel. It requires a lot of pieces, getting them properly just to make sure that we could get this right on the first round. And also, just want to say we have a major problem. Want to briefly go over some of the fire-related numbers. Last year, numbers related from January through end of May. Last year, we had 97 fires due to e-bikes. This year, we've made a little bit of progress, but not enough. 89 fires, just eight less fires compared to last year. Also injuries, 65 last year, from again, January through end of May versus 44. We've made some progress, but clearly, it is not enough. And we need everybody to step up, including the companies. The companies have their biggest market in the city of New York. And it's unacceptable that on a problem as serious as this, when they continue to just look away and hope that somebody else resolves the challenge. So I look forward to getting this bill to the finish line. I would say this bill is obviously not perfect yet. And I look forward to listening from the apps just to make sure that whatever tweaks need to be made are made. But again, we have a major problem, a problem related to safety of workers. And we need the companies to step up. It is unacceptable that, again, the companies, whether it's-- well, I shouldn't. But it's unacceptable that companies with their largest market, they just, again, continue to just look away and hope that somebody else resolves the problem. So I look forward to working with everyone, every single company and every single stakeholder, get feedback about different ways of getting this bill right so that once and for all, we could finally resolve this problem. But yeah, I want to thank all of you for working with all of us to craft this bill and resolve this issue. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Abreu.
Thank you again, Chair. With regard to pay transparency, can you speak to what delivery workers are currently able to see on their pay stub?
So right now, the apps have a great deal of discretion in terms of what information they give workers about their pay. And so the interface is going to vary depending on the app. But what we are hearing from workers is that they are not getting details about how elements of their pay are calculated so that they're unable to understand or predict kind of what they're going to receive. And so the concept behind the bill is a good one to require apps to give workers more information about the pay calculation.
And to your knowledge, are workers, or at least from what you're, based on what you're hearing, are workers able to see a breakdown of their active time versus their on-call time? Have you heard any issues about that?
At some apps, that is the case. But in terms of how that allocation of on-call time translates to dollars, that is, at some apps at least, opaque to workers.
You know, you can name the apps. I mean, tell me which ones. Is there any way currently for workers to check for wage theft or otherwise verify the number of, the number on the-- sorry, let me start again. Is there any way currently for workers to check for wage theft or otherwise verify the number on their pay stub matches what they were expecting for the week?
So yes. There, workers can file a complaint with DCWP at NYC.gov/workers or by calling 311. And through a combination of information that the worker has about their individual trip time and the reporting we're getting from the apps, we are able to check and verify that for most people. There are some open investigations, but for the most part, we are able to help workers with that.
Let me ask you another question. If an app tells deliveristas, if this bill moves forward and you support this bill, this will likely result in you losing your tipping. Would you consider that as retaliation?
I think, I cannot speak to the apps' motivations behind making that change.
But if someone is engaging in the activity of supporting this bill, supporting our bills, and then there's a threat that says you may, your tipping option may be removed if these bills pass, would that be considered retaliation? Because if not, then that's something we should look into.
Certainly a threat to exercise, a threat against a worker for exercising protected rights under the law is retaliation.
And would you consider supporting these bills' protected activity? Supporting council legislation-protected activity?
That's a complicated legal question. I'd have to think about that one.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I want to thank the administration for-- Councilmember Salamanca.
Just have one question in terms of the litigation. Should the city lose this lawsuit? How much would it cost the city?
I don't think we have any sort of estimate of that figure here. And I think, you know, we'd be happy to put you in touch with law department attorneys who might be able to answer more questions about the, you know, current state of the litigation.
All right, I've heard a number of about it. It will cost the city about $1 billion.
Yeah, we couldn't possibly estimate it right now, you know, at this state of play.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Feliz.
Thank you so much. A few more questions. The next one of questions on Intro 972, 2024, by Councilmember Powers, which would require that the third-party apps verify licensing for those that are doing deliveries with mopeds. You know, I would state the same point that I mentioned earlier on the, in the context of mopeds. Unacceptable that, you know, we have a large amount of individuals engaging in deliveries with mopeds and the companies turning a blind eye on those that are engaging in deliveries without licensing. A big issue. When people don't use licenses, we see, what I've seen, you know, you only need to spend a minute in the streets of New York City to see it is, people engage in recklessness, whether it's running red lights, so much more, putting everybody at risk, including themselves. So I think Intro 972 is very important bill to make sure that the companies are playing a role in helping us resolve that issue, rather than, again, saying, hopefully, somebody else can resolve it. Quick question. So the bill would require that the apps verify that the mopeds are licensed. What are ways that we've thought about, ways that they could potentially do that? Obviously, they have a large fleet, different companies, and some workers are working for different companies at the same time, if I'm correct?
Thank you, Councilmember. I think, well, one, I want to make sure, I want to be clear for the administration's perspective, that street safety is paramount. I think we all bear responsibility to make sure we're following appropriate traffic laws and rules for the safety of our friends and neighbors and family. But I do think you've hit the nail on the head that there are certain aspects of, there are certain aspects of this that are a responsibility to of apps that are engaging, you know, tens of thousands of workers throughout our city. You know, one, for example, I think, thinking about my work with my colleagues at DOT, for example, and their standing up with the Revel scooter program, you know, they have had aspects of confirming that folks were wearing helmets, confirming the identity of the riders on the Revel scooters. That's a case I've heard an example of that I'm sure DOT would delve in further for. But again, I think, you know, we are certainly, as an administration and I'm sure as a council, we are having to develop these robust policy responses because of these dynamics that have happened in our streets that are certainly dynamics of unsafe practices that are being driven from app companies.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, any more questions? Going once, going twice? Okay, thank you to the administration. We really appreciate your testimony today.
Thank you very much, Chair.
We will move right into the public comment period because we are eager to hear from the public. So I'm now going to open the hearing for public testimony. I want to remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding and that decorum should be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but they may submit transcripts of such recordings to the sergeant-at-arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the sergeant-at-arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you'll have two minutes to speak on today's hearing topic, which is Intro 30-A, 715, 737, 738, 762, 859, and 972. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony that you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that with the sergeant-at-arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within 72 hours of this hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be accepted. I will now call the first panel. The first panel is Claudia Enriquez from the New York City Comptroller's Office. Claudia, just put the red light on, thank you.
Hello, okay. Good morning, my name is Claudia Enriquez. I'm the Director of Worker Rights in the Bureau of Labor Law at the Office of the New York City Comptroller Brad Lander. And as you all know, when Comptroller Lander was a member of this council, he spearheaded the labor protections for delivery workers. Many of those standards-- workers. Many of those standards are in place today, and this set of issues is very important to him. At the Bureau of Labor Law, our mission is to protect vulnerable workers from exploitation, and that is why we are here today. Comptroller Lander strongly supports Intro 737 and 738, which establish standards around the solicitation of gratuities for app-based delivery workers. As my colleagues at the Department of Consumer and Work Protection already testified, it's well documented that after the minimum pay law went into effect, certain platforms changed their tipping structures so that customers could only tip after the order was placed or delivered. This resulted in lower overall tips to workers on those platforms. And so we support legislation that would regulate this. We did want to flag an issue with the way that the language is drafted. Both bills state that where tipping is solicited, or if tipping is solicited, then these requirements would apply. And we encourage the council to be thoughtful about that wording, so that it doesn't inadvertently provide a loophole for the apps to remove the tipping option altogether, and which we understand has already been threatened. Comptroller Lander also supports Intro 859, which would promote pay transparency. Workers have the right to this information, just like workers in other industries have access to their itemized paychecks and time records. Some of the bills before the council address traffic safety, and workers, you know, we support that workers be protected, that they are not incentivized to engage in unsafe acts, such as running red lights because of the time pressures. I see that I'm almost out of time. The remainder of my comments will have been submitted in writing.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, I'm now going to call the next panel. Haley Prim, Joshua Bosian, Cassandra Perez-Dessir, and Brian Lozano, please come up. Thank you. Okay, please begin.
Good morning. My name is Joshua, are we still in the morning? Good morning. My name is Joshua Bosian. I'm the Head of Government Affairs for Grubhub here in New York City. I'd like to thank Chair Menon and the members of the committee for the opportunity to testify today in support of Intro 762, the Fair Competition for Restaurants Act, as well as a range of issues facing delivery couriers in our city. While my testimony today focuses on 762, the Fair Competition for Restaurants Act, and the need to provide New York's independent restaurants with long overdue relief from caps on marketing services, I'd like to thank the council and recognize the important work being done to support delivery couriers. Grubhub continues to be a willing partner in these efforts, and we see reasonable paths forward on a number of these proposals being heard here today. We look forward to continuing those conversations. Intro 762, the Fair Competition for Restaurants Act, is the result of nearly two years of collaboration and compromise. So it's no surprise to see that it has broad support from multiple borough chambers of commerce, from restaurant groups like the New York State Latino Bar and Restaurant Association, and from countless restaurant owners themselves from across the city, many of whom are here today to voice their support. Together, we've made the Fair Competition for Restaurants Act, Intro 762, the strongest bill of its kind in the country. This amendment will give New York's independent restaurants a fighting chance against the big national brands and their massive advertising budgets. It affords them the choice, let me repeat that, the choice to take advantage of tools to expand their customer base, reward loyalty, and increase orders. At the same time, it includes a number of new safeguards to ensure restaurants' interests are protected. This bill is a win-win-win for restaurants, for diners, and for the couriers who deliver their orders. I'd like to thank the chair and the committee for holding this hearing today and to discuss the Fair Competition for Restaurants Act, Intro 762, and the whole host of issues facing our industry. By passing this amendment, we can assure that New York's small, independent restaurants are afforded a level playing field and the right to compete fairly. Let's take this crucial step together to strengthen our delivery ecosystem for the benefit of all New Yorkers. Thank you.
Good morning. Haley Prim, Senior Policy Manager at Uber. Good morning, Chair and members of the committee. We will submit written testimony detailing our concerns regarding Intros 715, 30A, Intro 972, and our support for Intro 762. I will focus my two minutes on Councilmember Abreu's tipping and pay calculation bills, which we oppose in current form, but welcome any conversation on any of the legislation listed on the agenda. First, some facts on tipping. Delivery workers who use Uber Eats currently make a minimum of 19.56 per hour plus tips. Uber Eats customers have the option to tip their delivery provider on every single order, and since January 1, they've tipped in total more than $25 million, or on average, $1 million each week. Third-party food delivery workers are the only app-based workers with mandated minimum pay in the city, and by law, they receive more information and have more choice than any app-based delivery worker in the city. The DCWP's November 2022 report stated that the new pay standard would ensure that delivery workers would no longer be so reliant on tips, and predicted that tipping may be reduced or eliminated in light of workers' higher pay. When the pay standard went into effect, Uber Eats did not take away the option for consumers to tip. The only thing that changed was when consumers would be able to tip, and that decision was made in part to help comply with requirements from this council's previous legislation. The council is also considering a bill that would create new requirements related to workers' pay calculations. However, components of this bill are technically impossible to implement. Other components would likely lead to more questions and confusion from workers, and others contradict pieces of the pay standard. Uber supports transparency. Workers already receive pay statements every week, which provide detailed information related to earnings, gratuities, total trips, and more. Just this past week, we launched an addendum to pay statements, which provides more information about the expenses, paid sick leave, and workers' compensation components that the DCWP explicitly considered when calculating the pay standard. We welcome continued conversation with the council on these bills and others being heard today. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair, members of the committee, and Cassandra Perez-Dessir on behalf of DoorDash. New York City's current price controls on restaurant delivery services are outdated, extreme, and risk causing further harm to restaurants, dashers, and consumers. Intro 762 is a common sense solution that guarantees restaurants have low-cost delivery options. It addresses concerns raised by the council and stakeholders alike, and the council should advance this bill so restaurants have every option available to help them recover and flourish. However, the other bills under consideration today take a one-step-forward, three steps-back approach with respect to delivery services in New York City and will create significant unintended consequences. Intro 30 would require delivery workers to have certified e-bikes provided by platforms, regardless of how much they use the platform. These amendments still completely ignore that restaurant delivery platforms are the only entities contributing to e-bike safety by paying workers an additional $2.26 per hour under the city's minimum pay rules, amounting to approximately $50 million to workers for the purchase of e-bikes. We remain steadfast in our opposition to any policy imposing overlapping expenses on a select few, while ignoring businesses selling these dangerous products in the first place. Even platforms and the LDU can understand that imposing millions in additional costs on platforms could reduce or eliminate e-bikes as an option, essentially putting many out of work. Intro 737 and 738 mandate that platforms solicit tips at checkout and suggest a tip of 10%. However, the narrative is misleading. In reality, tipping post-checkout is to balance rising consumer costs resulting from the minimum pay rules. DCWP's support is surprising, given the suggested changes to tipping on page 36 of their study. Still, higher consumer costs have resulted in an estimated 850,000 fewer orders for dashers, and $17 million in lost revenue for merchants in just a two-month period. Mandating tips at checkout will only exacerbate this. Worse yet, the proposal single out restaurant delivery platforms while others delivering groceries, alcohol, and other goods are not subject to any of the same pay or regulations. Finally, we oppose Intro 715, which would incentivize more traffic violations, not less. We look forward to continuing to work with the council over the summer on these concerns. Thank you.
Excuse me, one second. We just want to take a moment to recognize we have students in the balcony from Ballet Tech Public School for Dance. We really appreciate you being here. Number of questions that I have for this panel, and I'm sure my colleagues do as well. So what have you done to ensure that your delivery workers are riding certified e-bikes and registered mopeds while delivering for your service?
Hi, Haley from Uber. I can answer this question in a few different ways. For anyone who says they're right, plan to ride a moped to make deliveries on the app, we require them to upload insurance documentation as well as information from a registration. We also use, sorry, we also use real-time ID checks and reports from customers to make sure customers are on the right vehicle. For example, if they say they're on a manual bicycle and they're going 30 miles per hour, that's a clear indication that they're not registered the correct vehicle. Uber has also invested in partnerships in New York City, which go to increase delivery workers' access to UL-certified bikes, including through the Zumo partnership, as well as the Equitable Commute Partnership.
And what type of active training do you do for delivery workers?
We don't provide active training. We do send safety tips and road safety tips to delivery workers on a regular cadence.
What percentage of your delivery workers are using e-bikes, and what percentage are using mopeds?
More than 50% of workers who register through the app say they're using an e-bike or a manual bike. The use of mopeds is much, much smaller.
And what measures are you taking to ensure that individuals that are delivering on the platform have the proper equipment and are able to operate in a safe manner?
I'm happy to jump in, but also.
I'll answer if you want.
Yeah, yeah, it would be helpful.
Josh Bosian with Grubhub. You know, just to start off, to say that I think most of our answers are the same to the ones that Haley already gave you. It looks like Cassandra agrees that most of our answers are the same there. So in terms of ensuring that individuals have proper equipment, so we cannot compel our contractors to use certain types of equipment. You know, safe delivery is required in our delivery partner terms and conditions. However, much like my colleagues here, we do send out regular communications to the couriers, making sure and encouraging them to follow the rules of the road, do things such as safe charging with e-bikes, making sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. I would also say that we support bipartisan legislation that's currently pending in the United States Congress regarding UL-certified e-bikes and e-batteries. And we actually think that those that are not UL-certified should be banned. There was also a package of legislation that recently passed in Albany, which had, I think, five or six bills, if I remember correctly, that specifically dealt with e-bikes about, you know, point of sale, and that only UL-certified batteries should be sold, et cetera. We supported that package of legislation as well.
And just to add to that, in addition to directly providing workers with financial resources to pay for e-bikes and batteries through the minimum pay standard, DoorDash has taken additional steps to support access to safe e-bikes. We improved the access to certified bikes by investing $250,000 in the Equitable Commute Project to fund the development of the first-ever trade-in program dedicated to delivery workers in New York City. This program will run trade-in events on a biweekly basis to help delivery workers transition from their existing device to a new UL-certified e-bike. Delivery workers have three options to choose from, and e-bikes are priced as low as $700. Additionally, forging partnerships with reputable manufacturers and retailers to offer certified e-bikes to dashers at affordable prices. We have partnerships with e-bike suppliers that offer delivery workers discounted bikes and batteries that are certified to UL standards. These collaborations allow dashers to purchase e-bikes for as low as $949. We also invest in education, $100,000 in the FDNY Foundation to support battery safety education initiatives, and regularly update and remind dashers of the best practices. We also advocate for Congress and the U.S. Consumer Product Safety Commission to set federal battery safety standards for e-bikes and all micro mobility devices to stop uncertified products from entering the United States in the first place.
What changes have you made to the platform since minimum pay went into effect?
So at Grubhub, Councilmember, as the minimum pay went into effect, we've had to make adjustments to our platform to ensure that the number of couriers that are on the platform are in the correct correlation to the number of orders that are there. And so we've had to do things such as have courier sign up for blocks, for example, in order to make sure that, again, we have the right number of people on the road in order to do those deliveries. This is an interesting conundrum, because, in fact, when the DCWP passed the minimum wage, they predicted in their own study, and I would invite members of the committee to take a look at the study, that in fact, the industry would be forced to become more efficient, which would likely result in less couriers on the road. That has come to fruition. We still have about 20,000 folks at Grubhub who are active on our platform at any given time, but I do know that's less than before DCWP's minimum wage. I will say that we think that there's a way to increase the number of couriers and to increase their pay, which is to pass Intro 762. We firmly believe that amending the cap on restaurants will lead to more exposure to diners, which will lead to more orders for restaurants, which will lead to more opportunities for the couriers to make deliveries, thus leading to more money.
Okay, I have a question on that. But any, before I move on to a question on that, any other comments that either of you want to make on that topic?
I was just going to say similar. Prior to the earnings standard, we were open access. Since the launch, we had to limit workers' ability to go online in order to match the supply and demand.
So in jurisdictions that have enacted a cap fee, how many users opt for the minimum fee level, and how many opt for the maximum fee level?
So I can, I can answer this. So in similar jurisdictions where the fee cap has, has been amended, the overwhelming, and we're talking 90-plus percent of our restaurants, stayed at the exact same package that they had prior to COVID, prior to those fee caps going into effect. I can give you a specific example in San Francisco, where we know that approximately 15% of our restaurants are at the basic package, and about 85% of our restaurants or so in San Francisco opt for more services above the, the basic package.
I was just going to comment that the vast majority of caps since COVID have been repealed or removed by those jurisdictions, but we do offer merchants different pricing plans currently all over the country, outside of New York City, that range from light to premium options, and we see restaurants take advantage of that flexibility to choose the plan that works best for them.
I'm going to now turn to my colleagues for questions. Councilmember Abreu?
Yeah, I have a question. I have a question for Grubhub. Can you please tell me whether or not your tipping option remained at checkout after tipping, sorry, after minimum wage went into effect?
Yes.
So what do you say about this notion from, from Uber and DoorDash that passing the minimum wage require them to remove the tipping at checkout? What do you have to say to that?
We're, we're running our business, and they're running their business. I'm not going to comment on how they're running their business. I think you're going to have to ask my two colleagues about that. But Councilmember, I will say this. That is correct. We did not change our tipping policy. However, we are under a tremendous pressure to do so from our business, because we are now at a competitive disadvantage. What we have seen, and this, you can take it from the company that hasn't changed its tipping policy, is that, in fact, because of the DCWP minimum wage, we are actually seeing a decrease of approximately 25% of what our customers are tipping, the couriers. So to say that there's not been an effect, we actually have data to show that there is an effect.
And just, you know, the admin made clear that apps like Grubhub, which have kept tipping at checkout, for the most part have, even though there's been a slight decrease in tipping, it has been by far the most helpful for deliveristas. Compared to the other apps like Uber and DoorDash, we have seen an $85 million drop. So I guess I would ask DoorDash the question, what do you make of the fact that your colleagues at Grubhub have kept tipping at checkout, which have been favorable for deliveristas, and you guys decided against doing that?
Thank you. So similarly, I'm not going to speak on behalf of Grubhub, but I will speak on behalf of DoorDash and our position on moving tips to post-checkout. So because of the NYC pay regulations, they forced DoorDash and other platforms to increase consumer fees, as you know. In response to this, we made tips an option post-checkout. Not to make, the intent wasn't to make tipping harder, but it was to limit the number of consumers who were abandoning placing an order because of the higher cost. Each lost order not only guarantees that there won't be a tip, but it results in no earning opportunity at all for dashers. That's bad for dashers, restaurants, and customers in the city. So making these tips available after checkout is not so nefarious and definitely not retaliatory. As I mentioned in my testimony, it was even suggested by DCWP in their own study on page 36 that I referenced, and you will all have a copy of that. It was suggested in that study of the pay standard as a strategy to reduce consumer costs. So this was acknowledged by the administration as well.
Understood. And where you're engaging it is not necessarily legal behavior, but it is certainly behavior that is, that has bad intent, and is behavior that is, I believe, inconsistent with the needs of deliveristas. You, you mentioned in your testimony that orders have decreased. The admin said 8% has increased. How do you reconcile the admin's testimony versus yours? Is there false reporting, or is there act? Is there false reporting or is there actual decrease?
I have the same question. That was the first that I'd heard of it, and we are looking to follow up with them to find--
Because there is a reporting requirement, and they said it was 8%. And you're, in your testimony, you mentioned that it's for a period of two months.
That's right.
So I'm curious to know if that overall year period, if that matches what, what's been reported, because that discrepancy is very concerning.
And it's, and it's significant as well that the last two months, those numbers, as I mentioned, are 850,000 drop in orders and $17 million in loss of revenue. So that's just April and May alone, so we can certainly--
So would you say that the administration is lying?
No, I would not say that. I would say that we have to talk after the hearing and figure out all of the numbers and compare--
So, so they're either lying, they're misreporting, or what you said does not characterize the entire year period that they reported.
Yeah, I'm not speaking for the entire industry, only for DoorDash.
Yeah, okay.
Councilwoman Salamanca, questions?
Oh yeah, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I wanna thank the panel for being here today. Just wanna speak a little bit about Intro 762. I know that there is some opposition on it, and I just wanna get some clarity. I thank you for the, the Crane's article in New York that came out. So it, it mentions, I know that the, the person who wrote this op-ed is Lisa Sivin. She's from the Bronx Chamber of Commerce, and she makes mention in terms of the Bronx Chamber of Commerce being in favor of Intro 762. But something that was quoted here, and I just wanted to get your intake on it, in terms of the opposition for the bill. It reads that opponents of this bill have argued that this amendment would just allow delivery companies to charge restaurants more for marketing services. Can you speak a little bit about that?
Sure, Councilmember, I'll, I'll take a first stab at this, and then I'm sure my colleagues will either correct me or jump in. So I think that there's a great misconception out there that in fact, Intro 762 lifts the cap completely, and that the cap completely just go, goes away. Let, let's keep in mind here, and let's remember that at the height of COVID, there were about 92 such caps that were in place across the entire country in municipalities, small and big. There's one left of this type, and it's here in New York City. So we are not lifting the cap completely. What we're doing is we are amending the cap in a similar way that the cap has been amended in major municipalities all across the country, whether that be Chicago or Philadelphia, Seattle, San Francisco, just to name a few. 762 is literally the culmination of two-plus years of conversations with the council, with restaurants, with advocacy organizations, to try and find a way to continue to give restaurants guidelines and guardrails, rather, and at the same time, allow us to continue to operate here in New York City. So let me go through some of the safeguards that 762 specifically has for restaurants. One, the right to be listed and discoverable on the platforms. Two, the right to include their own marketing materials in the deliveries. Three, to write their set, their own in-app menu prices. Four, the right to prohibit delivery platforms purchasing their restaurant's names for advertising. And finally, it requires DCWP to do compliance assessments on a regular basis. We have literally put everything in this bill and agreed to everything that we've been asked to by the council. And Councilmember, I would invite you, when other folks come up here today, to perhaps testify against this piece of legislation, to ask them what more that they want, to ask them what else that we should put in the bill, to ask them what their suggestions are, because we have been asking for two and a half years, and we have yet to get an answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I wanna have an opportunity to respond to that as well and to add to it that because of the way that the amendments in this bill are structured, the platforms will be required to provide the restaurants the option to obtain delivery for a 15% commission, as you're well aware, and non-delivery services, such as pickup and listing fees for a 5% commission plus transaction fees inclusive of marketing or any other fees. If restaurants wanna pay more for additional marketing, they're free to do so, but they are not required to do so. In addition to the increased customer visibility restaurants receive on Plus and Premier Plans, DoorDash offers restaurants access to sponsored ads and promotions, a $0 delivery fee for customers on DoorDash Marketplace. DoorDash also invests in marketing and advertising for DoorDash Marketplace, which helps drive growth for restaurants.
So what would happen if a restaurant were to choose the minimum package? In terms of marketing?
So all restaurants, regardless of what package they have, will be searchable and will be able to be found on the platforms. That is a guarantee of Intro 762. Nobody gets hidden, does not matter what package you have.
All right, all right, thank you. The council members, the chair stepped off for a minute. She asked me just to take over, so we're just gonna hand it over to Councilmember Oswald for, for, for his questions.
Thank you so much. Thank you. So a few questions for all of you. What's your position on Intro 38, which requires that, you know, you verify UL certification and provide a UL-certified e-bike? And also Intro 972, which requires you verify licensing for, if mopeds are used for deliveries?
I can start. I think on Intro 38, thank you, you know, I know we've been talking about this for a long time. I appreciate the new language. It was nice to see that it was broader and more inclusive, so that third-party grocery delivery services, other restaurants, or other small businesses that contract with workers who operate on e-bikes would be included in this. However, I still have concerns that so far, this is the only industry that's currently paying workers a wage that has allocation for expenses that should be going towards e-bikes, as stated in the study. I think from only Uber's data, we know that, sorry, I have a number here. More than 9,000 workers have already earned at least $900 towards expenses since the earnings standard went into effect. The DCWP in their study said that a new e-bike is $1,800, so it's reasonable to expect that after one year, they'll have earned enough to purchase a UL-certified e-bike, based on the DCWP's study. So that is a concern of ours that remains.
Okay, what about Intro 972, which requires that all of you verify the licensing for mopeds?
Sure, happy to start. I think, you know, we're open for discussion on that. We do currently collect insurance information, as well as information that comes from the registration of a vehicle for delivery workers. That bill, I believe, should, is similar to 38, be expanded to include other companies that operate with mopeds. But I would love to talk through some flexibility of how we collect that information and what exactly verifying registration means. We are not the DMV, of course, we would wanna, you know, have a better understanding of what exactly that means to the council.
Okay, and can we also hear from the other companies? Same two questions, 38 and also 972.
Thank you, Councilman. So on the mopeds issue, it has been difficult to invest more in, well, on the e-bikes, the battery safety initiatives, when we're already directly compensating the workers for the e-bikes and the safety equipment. We feel that the platforms and the city must come together to align on how we can contribute to this issue and not have duplicative and unsustainable requirements. We, like the city, have also struggled to identify the best way to actually help this transition occur, and think the city's participation in a trade-in scheme is essential to that success. Additionally, on the mopeds, before gaining access to the pro platform, every prospective dasher must have a current valid government ID. This is for e-bikes and also mopeds alike. They have to have a social security number and complete a background check. Dashers using motor vehicles, including mopeds, have to have a driving history check is also run, verifying their eligibility to drive. It also provides an individual's driving record, driving history, and minor violations such as speeding or running stop signs. Even after this approval to dash, dashers undergo regular background check reruns to ensure our records are up-to-date, dependent on DMV record databases, and to evaluate any new information that should be considered in determining dasher's eligibility to continue on the platform.
So Councilmember, let me take the first, the second question first, which is the, the moped registration question. I, I think currently, as the bill is written, we, we oppose the piece of legislation simply for the same exact reasons that my colleague Haley at Uber said, which is I'm not sure how we verify or certify a registration, right? We're not the DMV, we're not the DOT, we're not the NYPD, and we don't think that we should substitute for a city or state agencies whose job it is to, to, to do that in type of enforcement. However, we do require currently anyone who is deciding to operate via moped or car to upload, upload their registration, much like Haley's, much like Uber Eats, when they sign onto our platform to become a, a courier. So that would be that question. I think we could, you know, potentially continue the conversation with Councilmember Powers to, to talk through that. In, in terms of, of your legislation, Intro 38, if by my count, I think this is the third time that we've had a conversation or a hearing on 38, right? I think it was last October, January, now we're back. Much like my colleagues, I think we're very appreciative of the fact that you've expanded the folks who are covered under this bill, and I think that that's a good first start. However, I think we're still in opposition to it because, you know, we're running into the same problems. If you, if you, if you work for all, or if you, if you deliver for all three of our companies, how many e-bikes do you get? How many e-batteries do you get? Do you get three? And in addition to what Cassandra said, there's already $2.26, which is specifically built in to the DCWP minimum wage, which is supposed to go for this exact type of thing, for this exact thing of safety equipment. So for us, it feels like we're getting hit twice, where we're paying $2.26, that's in the minimum wage for safety equipment, and then we would be asked to do it again. So I think to your point, we're not sure the bill is quite ready yet, and perhaps we need to, to have some additional conversation. I just do wanna add one other thing. I thought Councilmember Menon asked an excellent question of the administration when she said, what's the status of the idea of the Office of Sustainable Micro Delivery or whatever? Sustainable Delivery, thank you, I always get it wrong. We all sat through a meeting with the administration regarding that proposal. I think we thought it was somewhat of a good idea, right? Let's put everything that's kind of in this disparate city agencies right now into one office. Let's see if we can solve the problem holistically and do it that way, and we'd love to see what the, what the status of that office is.
All right, thank you. So two points, and I guess the first one, the first point is on the issue of moped registration verification. I know some of you mentioned that there, there are some systems uploading insurance information, et cetera, but I think anybody that, again, just spent one minute in the, looking around in the streets of New York City, would agree that whatever system we have in place has the same exact effect of having no system at all. Whatever all of you have in place on that issue is not working, not even close to working. And on the minimum wage issue, covering UL-certified e-bikes, what about new workers? What about workers that are starting afresh, that they wanna do delivery work, but they'll have to work a year with an uncertified e-bike before they could actually afford a certified one, based on the, the wage-related numbers and the pricing for these e-bikes? So that's one year that they need to work, putting their lives at risk, putting their homes at risk, through a fire and et cetera, and I think that, that's a major problem. And it seems like, on all these issues, it seems like the, the overall narrative or thing that I hear from all the companies is, you know, let the issue potentially go away on its own. We don't wanna play a role, and I think, I think that's very problematic. So a few questions on that. So what exactly are you doing to resolve the fire safety crisis that we're in? And yes, it's a crisis. Again, 97 fires last year from January through end of May, this year, similar numbers. We're in a crisis, so what exactly are you doing to resolve that? I know you mentioned the Equitable Commute Project. What else? And what do you say, based on the numbers, are you doing enough?
Well, I wanna respond to what you just said about how a new worker would have to use an uncertified, unsafe bike for a year before being able to afford a UL-certified bike. I think that's exactly why we've set up these partnerships in New York City, like Uber has Zumo, I think Grubhub is with Joko, so that workers can rent on a weekly or a monthly basis as they start out on the platforms and earn money in order to save up for a UL-certified bike. So there's nothing that we're, I mean, we're not hoping that workers buy an uncertified bike as they start working on our platform just to earn for a UL-certified bike.
And I can add to that as well. This would require a lot of, you know, partnerships with the industry and with the city as well, specifically on proof of UL compliance for e-bikes. Right now, this is a pointless exercise because it would require us to remove almost every e-bike-based worker that uses our platform, because very few workers have UL-certified devices, as was mentioned. We believe the city did the right thing by setting safety standards, switching from no standard to UL 2849, and it was a fairly quick change to a standard that relatively few bikes are certified to. Even major reputable manufacturers have only recently been able to catch up. Other efforts to reduce fires by manufacturing UL-certified replacement batteries for older products are only just becoming available. Asking platforms to do this right now is essentially asking us to cut off tens of thousands of people from work.
And based on the different programs that you've worked on, we've had a lot of conversations about them, the rentals, e-bike rentals, the Equitable Commute Project, more or less, how many delivery workers could they potentially cover? Based on their fleet, amount of e-bike rentals available, and et cetera?
I don't have specific numbers. I know that the Zumo partnership, they recently got a new delivery of UL-certified bikes in just this last quarter, so I would have to check on the number, but I think each of these programs began last year, and they had a slow ramp up, but what we've seen is more and more uptake as people become more familiar since the city's new standards went into effect. So I can follow up with you on specific numbers related to those two programs.
All right, what about the others?
Yeah, no, Councilmember, Grubhub has two partnerships, one with Joko and one with an organization like Wiz. I don't have the exact number sitting in front of me, but if you, you know, get in touch with us afterwards, I'll be happy to get you the, the data that you're requesting, not a problem.
Okay. All right, well, thank you so much. And again, just wanna reiterate, we have issues, and whatever has been done is not even close to being enough. We're in the same position we were at last year, so whatever has been done is not even close to being enough. We have issues, and the companies need to play a role in resolving them. Workers make these companies, they make these companies possible, and, you know, companies should look out for the workers a little bit more, and make, look out for their safety, for their homes and everything else, so, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to this panel. We are now gonna move on to the next panel, which will be comprised of Andrew Riddi and Chris Lauber. Please come up, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Riddi. Oh, ready to go?
Yes, please.
Thank you. My name is Andrew Riddi, and I am the Executive Director of the New York City Hospitality Alliance. We represent restaurants across the five boroughs. We strongly oppose Intro 762. The third-party delivery companies have given this bill the phony name, the Fair Competition for Restaurants Act, which is the exact opposite of this proposal. Let's call it what it is, the bigger fees for big delivery bill. Today, the city council is hosting another hearing on another package of bills to further regulate third-party delivery companies, because they're continually bad actors. Still, they've been able to obscure the intent of 762, which deregulates them where they're having it considered. The city council should not further entertain changing this fee cap law while DoorDash, Grubhub, and Uber are suing the city of New York to overturn this very same fee cap law. So far, their lawsuit has been unsuccessful. They are also suing the city to overturn another law this legislative body passed that would prevent them from withholding a restaurant's own customer information from the restaurant, which is the technique they use to control the consumer marketplace. It's monopolistic-like behavior. Intro 762 will increase the maximum fees, the current cap is of 23%, to letting third-party delivery companies take a whopping 43% of each order from a restaurant, while also charging the consumer a fee too. The average restaurant has single-digit profit margins, if they're making any money. Does the city council wanna let third-party delivery companies take nearly half the money of each restaurant order? Yes. The companies have agreed to a few good amendments that the Hospitality Alliance advocated for as standalone laws that should be enacted, but not as part of a negotiation to gut this fee cap. Now, I have a little, can I go? I didn't bring tons of people here, so if I could get--
Yeah, we, we--
Okay.
We have to have everyone speak this in advance, so if you could please wrap up, and then you can submit your written testimony.
Will do. The most important thing is that the companies are saying that the 5% marketing option will make them require restaurants are listed and discoverable, but this bill does not define what listed and discoverable is. Under this language, they could technically make a restaurant listable and discoverable, but only if a restaurant customer types in the exact name, or if a customer is ordering from maybe a two-block radius. There's various ways they can obscure this and make--
Okay, I have to ask you to wrap up, please, thank you.
So we're happy to obviously submit all of our testimony, but these companies have showed you over and over again who they are. The council and restaurants should believe them.
Okay, next speaker, please.
Thank you, and good morning to--
Thank you, and good morning to, I should say, actually, it is still morning, technically, to members of New York City Council and attendees. My name is Chris Lauber. I'm the manager, I've managed restaurants and hotel operations in New York for over a decade, advised in some of the top hospitality technologies used today. And I'm currently the Senior Director of Operations for a restaurant group here in New York City. I'm here today to urge you to maintain the fee cap for the delivery platforms as they're essential for the survival of restaurants in our city. The fee caps implemented during the pandemic have been a lifeline for countless restaurants. The pandemic hit restaurants and hotels very hard, and the delivery platform usage actually soared. Restrictions for the indoor dining further increased the reliance on these delivery and takeout platforms, altering the landscape of our industry. The fee caps have changed and created different layers of marketing caps and fee caps and credit card caps and otherwise. But these caps have been in place to check the absorbent fees from the platforms that would otherwise charge whatever they would like. Without these caps, restaurants could double, restaurant fees could double or worse. From an industry with thin profit margins of 5% to 10%, increasing these fees could mean the difference between staying open and closing. Recently, I even had to argue with multiple platforms just to abide by the current regulations in place and not overcharge us when onboarding our restaurants. So removing the fee cap would disproportionately affect smaller independent restaurants and bring bargaining power to larger restaurants, further creating an uneven playing field that favors larger chains. Small businesses in New York City create the vibrant culinary scene and culture that we have. And so in conclusion, I would say maintaining the marketing fee caps is crucial for the survival of independent restaurants in New York. I urge this council to consider the long-term implications of lifting these caps. I would also like to add that with these caps, searchable and discoverable is my number-one concern because we find that they are looking to find exponential ways to add on to their potential fees.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. I have a couple of questions, and I'll turn it over to my colleagues for questions. So with INTRO 762, since it's voluntary as to whether or not a restaurant opts to do it, it's an opt-in, why still the concern?
Well, I would just say that, you know, this wasn't a pan, this didn't start at the beginning of the pandemic. The reason we got here was because multiple hearings in this council about how they use their market leverage and control to essentially force restaurants to increase the fees that they pay. If you don't pay to play, you essentially disappear. And that's why I mentioned listed and discoverable. It essentially means nothing without it being defined. Sure, if I pay 5%, I can be technically searchable, but not accessible. And then the representative goes to the pizzeria across the corner and around the corner and says, if you don't pay, you know, if you pay 25%, you can basically take the business from the other restaurant. So they continue to play each other off of each other. And it's important to note that the lawsuit, another one of their lawsuits, difficult to keep up with all the times these companies sue the city. But you did, the council did pass a law that required the companies share customer information with the restaurants. And because they withhold that information, restaurants can't even directly market via email and so forth. So they have a very sophisticated way of essentially leveraging their market share and power to force places to pay up. And if they don't, they lose their business. It happened year after year after year. It's why we ended up here in the first place.
And can you comment on other cities, other cities that have similar legislation and the impact there?
The ones that gutted the fee cap?
In other words, other other cities that were mentioned earlier by some of the third-party apps, San Francisco and other cities, and how this kind of program works there?
Yeah, their aggressive lobbying campaigns were successful at gutting the fee cap, and they have issues like the ones that we've laid out. I mean, New York City always talks about wanting to be the leader. We are a leader with this fee cap, and the fact that we still have it in place should be something that a city that leads wants to promote, not be shamed about. So, you know. And and again, you know, I can't speak specifics of the whole history there, but we have a long documented history of the exploitation of local restaurants by third-party delivery companies, much of which has been documented in these chambers.
So are there services that you want to receive from third-party food delivery services that aren't currently available?
Would you be able to better define the question?
Well, in other words, are there things that you think the third-party delivery app should be offering to restaurants that they're not offering? Are there things that would be value-added?
At the current 5% rate, it appears to be an even playing field within New York City. It's more based around proximity or specific cuisine you're searching inside of an app that then allows you to be found. The concern underneath this 762 is that searchable and discoverable does not define how hard you have to search to discover the restaurant you're looking for. Therefore, it would create an uneven playing field. For example, if, as Andrew mentioned earlier, our restaurants had been next to each other, right? And they had two different marketing strategies inside, we would then have one exponentially higher than the other, which is ultimately what they're arguing is the point. However, the margins are so thin going into restaurants to begin with that it creates kind of an effect of rat race that would be exponentially playing one off of the other to get higher and higher in the fee cap until eventually it's exhausted.
They could drop their lawsuit on the customer information. One of the things that restaurants want is to be able to market directly, digitally, to their customers. That's why, but the third-party delivery companies withhold that information from the restaurants. That's why this City Council passed a law that has a stay because they're suing over it not to provide that information. You know, there's another thing. For example, if you're paying for marketing and get me a new customer, incremental business. Yes, that in theory is worth more. I'll pay a little bit of a higher marketing fee if you're bringing me a new customer, a new order I would not have normally had. I'll pay 15% for that order. But what happens when that customer orders again? Why am I continuing to pay 15% or 20% when it's not a new sale? So I think there are plenty of ways that these companies could work better in a more fair way with restaurants. I dispute the claim that they've done everything and they haven't been present, you know, everything that has been asked from them. There is tons and tons and tons of things that have been asked for them that they haven't done. This is the classic sleight of hand, you know? Look over there, but don't look over here.
Okay, and do any of the colleagues have questions? Councilmember Salamanca.
Yeah, I just have a few questions. Thank you for your testimony. I have just a question. So I know that in the previous bill, I believe it was 813, there was opposition, great opposition from other restaurant associations. But I've seen with this newerized bill, that opposition has leaned to being in favor of that bill, one of them being the New York State Latino Restaurant and Bar Association. Can you explain to me why now those individuals that were not in favor of the previous bill are now in favor of the bill today?
I'm going to be careful, these folks are my good friends. I've been doing this for 20 years. My integrity runs on this. Different organizations are going to make different decisions for different reasons, just as elected officials are going to do, hopefully, what you all feel is right. I've studied these issues. We're all going to have to answer to our members eventually. And while they may feel they are doing the right thing, that is in their right. I believe it is very misguided to agree to this bill as is. And we will continue to fight and represent our members, represent what we believe is right because we don't want to have to be back here with our friends again, who may be on the opposite side of it now, saying, oof, maybe we got to go back and do something. And I would just say, this day is a perfect example. You passed the minimum pay rate. They lobbied hard against it. You still passed it. What did they do? They sued. Guess what? As you know, the court upheld the minimum pay rate. So what did they do? They went in obscured ways and made it more difficult for the folks to tip. And now you have a bill today to address that. I would suspect that if you were to pass 762, we would be back here in the future and dealing with the same types of issues that we have been dealing with for years and years. Sorry, I was a little long-winded.
No, no, I appreciate your comments. I just, you know, on the original bill, I was on it, and I was just getting bombarded with calls from my friends and, you know, in the hospitality industry. And those are the same individuals, once this new bill was introduced, giving me a call saying they are in favor of this bill, let's make it happen.
And I know others who are not. And I will tell you, I've been receiving emails from restaurants that are receiving stuff from many of these companies, robo-calls. You know, you are all professionals at this. You know that when you lobby hard enough and throw enough money at stuff and do as much public relations, you can get people to come out and testify against what I think is their own interest. But like I said, people are going to do what they feel is right. Just with my 20 years of focus on all of these issues, I just have a very, very bad feeling, especially as this bill is drafted. Because while it does other things, it's not putting any guardrails on the most important point, which is the listed and discoverable piece and the percentage.
All right, I just one last question. I just want to get your comment on this op-ed that was written.
From Lisa?
Yes. It says, opponents on this bill have argued that this amendment would just allow delivery companies to charge restaurants more for marketing. But that claim fundamentally misses the point of this bill. What is your comment towards that statement?
Well, that's what it.
Opponents of this bill argue that this amendment would allow delivery companies to charge restaurants more for marketing. But the claim fundamentally misses the point of this bill. The amendment strikes the right balance of small businesses because it empowers restaurant owners to make decisions that are best for their own businesses by ensuring that platforms maintain low-cost options that still provide exceptional services to local restaurants and unparalleled access to thousands of customers across New York City.
I love Lisa dearly, but I think it completely misses the whole entire point. And it's exactly what these companies want to say. It's an illusion of power. The real reason that we got here before the pandemic, you know, why this was an issue, it was the illusion. It's like, yeah, you know, you can pay nothing and you basically get nothing. But they have a very sophisticated way of basically leveraging these businesses to get them to pay more. So sure, you know, they can in a sense pay more for marketing. But what happens if they stay at the 5% level, right? If I'm a restaurant in your district and I continue, say, you know what? I'm just going to continue to pay the 5%. Are these companies going to guarantee that they're going to stay at the same delivery level? Or is Grubhub or DoorDash or Uber Eats going to go to that same restaurant in your district and say, hey, you know what? The competing restaurant across the street is now paying 25%. Mr. Restaurant, Mrs. Restaurant, you know, if you start paying me more, then you could start competing. And they play each other off each other. I mean, this is just what happened. So I would just say in response to that is that it's an illusion.
All right, I appreciate your statement. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions from colleagues? If not, we will move on. Okay, thank you very much to this panel, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call our next panel. Luigi Galipa, Alejandro Grajales, William Medina, Antonio Salas. Please come up, thank you. Okay, thank you. I'm also going to note we've been joined by Councilmember Brewer.
Ready? Yeah, okay.
Please, go ahead, thank you.
Thank you. So thank you so much, Chair Menon, for the opportunity to testify today. Also sponsors Sean Avr, Oswaldo Solis, and Lynn Schulman for giving us the opportunity. So my name is Ligia Walpa. I'm the Executive Director of the Workers' Justice Project. I want to thank Commissioner Bildamayuga and the Department of Consumer Worker Protection for their partnership, actually, not only implementing minimum pay, but also holding apps accountable. We've been able to collect unpaid wages from DoorDash and educate hundreds of workers. Over the past six months, we have witnessed the transformative power of minimum pay lifting delivery workers out of poverty. But the fight is far from over. The apps continue to retaliate and sow division. Since the implementation of minimum pay, DoorDash, Uber have removed the tip option before delivery, a system that they had in place before and were used and are actually intentionally used to discourage tipping from consumers. This tactic is hurting workers and is misleading the public and missing and it's directly impacting workers' pockets. We're thankful for INTRO 737, INTRO 738, which will focus on tip transparency. These bills require app delivery companies to be, to actually show tipping at the beginning of checkout, essentially restating the system that they had in place before. INTRO 859 will require, will actually give an ability for workers to be able to see their pay and actually plan their finances in advance, which is something that we should all have the right to do it. While we deeply appreciate the advocacy and the partnership of Councilmember Oswaldo Solis, Lynn Schulman, and Keith Powers and their noble intentions of legislation, INTRO 30, INTRO 715, and also INTRO 972, we strongly support the intentions. Our concern is that without deactivation protections could lead from thousands of people losing their jobs. So we want to be able to work with City Council and council members to be able to ensure that workers have the activation protections and incorporate legislative language that'll secure more protections, giving power to workers to fight back unfair deactivation.
Thank you, I'm just going to ask you to wrap up.
Yeah, so we look forward to building a stronger language so we can have more comprehensive legislation that would lead to holding these apps accountable. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I'm going to be translating after he speaks.
Okay, thank you.
Buenos dias. Gracias a la presidenta del comité de consumidores y trabajadores, Julie Menon, y a todos los miembros de este comité. Mi nombre es Alejandro Grajales, soy deliveryista y miembro del proyecto de justicia laboral y los deliveryistas unidos. Llevo aproximadamente nueve años trabajando como deliveryista con las aplicaciones como Grubhub, DoorDash, and Relay. Durante los últimos seis meses hemos sido testigos de las represalias tales como haber removido la opción de la propina al principio del proceso del pedido, restricciones de horarios, falta de transparencias en el pago, y bloqueos y desactivaciones injustas. La realidad es que estas aplicaciones cada día son más abusivas y nos presionan para aceptar todas las entregas. Nos empujan a cumplir las entregas en un tiempo muy corto sin tener en consideración si hay tráfico y si hay condiciones climáticas adversas. Las aplicaciones usan las calificaciones para penalizar si no entregamos a tiempo, si no aceptamos todas las órdenes o por errores del restaurante o el cliente. Desde la implementación del pago mínimo, DoorDash y Uber eliminaron la opción de dar propina antes de la entrega, un sistema que tenían implementado y al que los consumidores estaban acostumbrados durante años para desalentar las propinas. Las aplicaciones siguen sembrando división y confusión. Un ejemplo de esto es el correo electrónico que recientemente envió DoorDash amenazándonos que van a remover la propina y sembrando más miedo, confusión, y división entre los repartidores. Al quitar la opción de dejar propinas al principio del pedido, estas aplicaciones no solo están subestimando nuestros ingresos, sino también desvalorizando nuestro trabajo y contribución a nuestra comunidad. Muchos de nosotros seguimos enfrentando bloqueos arbitrarios o desactivaciones injustas. Esto nos deja vulnerables y sin protección, con consecuencias devastadoras para nuestro sustento y bienestar. En conclusión, aunque hemos logrado un gran avance con el establecimiento de un salario mínimo, necesitamos su apoyo para luchar contra las represalias. Exigimos que se restara la opción de las propinas al principio del proceso de pedido, se aumente la protección contra las desactivaciones injustas, y se garantice una mayor transparencia en el pago. Por eso estoy aquí para apoyar la propuesta de ley C-737 y C-738. Juntos podemos continuar luchando por un futuro más justo y equitativo para todos los deliveryistas. Muchas gracias por escucharme.
Yeah, I'm going to try to summarize as quickly as possible. So my name is Alejandro Grajales. I'm a deliveryista. Over the past six months, we have witnessed the retaliations such as removing the tipping option from the beginning of the order, setting unfair scheduling restrictions and unfair deactivations. The reality is that these apps are becoming more abusive every day, and they're constantly pressuring us to accept all deliveries. They're pushing us to fulfill orders in a very short time without taking into consideration the weather, the traffic, and other working conditions. Apps are using the algorithms to penalize if we don't deliver on time and if we don't accept all orders from the restaurants. Since the implementation of minimum pay, DoorDash and Uber have eliminated the option to tip at the beginning of the order, a system that they had in place before and that consumers had, were used to already. The apps continue to sow division, confusion. An example of this is that DoorDash recently sent a message, an email, threatening us that they will completely eliminate the tipping option, creating more fear, confusion, and division. By removing the tipping option at the beginning of the order, these apps are not only undermining our income, but they're also devaluing our work. Many of us continue to Many of us continue to face arbitrary lockouts, unfair deactivations. They leave us, these leaves us vulnerable and unprotected with devastating consequences. We demand the tip option to be restored at the beginning of the ordering process, and we strongly support Intro 737, 738, and together we can fight together for a more just, equitable future for all deliveristas.
Thank you to the President of the Consumer and Workers' Committee, Julie Menon, and all the members of this committee for the opportunity to speak today. My name is William Medina. I'm a member of the Worker Justice Project and leader of Los Deliveristas Unidos, and I'm currently working delivering for Uber Eats. Delivery work in New York City has become an essential job that deserves labor protections and recognition. In extreme heat days like today, we cannot afford to stay at home but have to work in the streets to bring food to our families' table, put a roof over our family heads. As independent contractors, we don't get the same labor protection like most New York City workers. We don't have the right to a safe workplace. We don't have the right to be protected from unfair deactivations, which is a four fighting us. We don't have the right to refuse to work in a situation in which I will be exposed to hazards. In the past six months, DoorDash and Uber Eats removed the tipping option until after the order was delivered to discourage consumer from tipping. This tactic is intended to harm our wallet and mislead the public. While they continue to make millions in profit, also other apps like Hungry Panda forces workers to pick up more than four to seven orders at the same time just to save money and put pressure on deliveristas to drive fast and avoid being penalized by the apps. The apps are using deactivation to pressure us to drive unsafely. Also, the app removed the tipping option of consumer with the clear intention to harm us. Many deliveristas have seen a significant decrease in tips because consumers are no longer provided with that option. I strongly support Intro 737, 738, which he intends to bring us to what used to be norm and common practices before. Please note that DoorDash has threatened to remove the tipping option if this bill is passed. We need a council to create extraordinary languages that will mandate apps to provide tipping options to consumers if Grubhub--
Okay, I'm going to ask you to please wrap up.
--can do as well. Sorry.
Then you can submit your written testimony. We just have to give every speaker the exact same amount of time.
All right. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. So a couple questions. Oh, so sorry.
Thank you. Buen dia. Gracias a la Presidente del Comité de Consumidores y Trabajadores, Julie Menon, y a todos los miembros de este comité. Mi nombre es Antonio Solis. Soy deliveryista, miembro activo del Proyecto de Justicia Laboral y líder de Los Deliveristas Unidos. Llevo cinco años trabajando para DoorDash. Agradecemos al Consejal Abreu por su liderazgo en el Intro 737 y en el Intro 738, que se centran en la transparencia. Estas propuestas de ley requieren que las aplicaciones de entrega presenten claramente una opción de propina al momento del pago, esencialmente restableciendo el sistema que las aplicaciones ya tenían anteriormente. He sido testigo de cómo DoorDash ha eliminado la opción de propina con la única intención de proteger sus intereses y afectar nuestros bolsillos. DoorDash esta semana nos envió un comunicado amenazándonos con eliminar la propina con un correo lleno de mentiras y con la única intención de crear división entre nosotros. En mi testimonio está la copia del correo de DoorDash que envió esta semana. La actitud de DoorDash es un insulto y una demostración que estas aplicaciones no les importamos y nos continuarán tratando con mano de obra desechable, sin derechos y sin protecciones. A pesar de los ataques, la división, y la desinformación, estamos aquí luchando para tener derechos y poder luchar contra las desactivaciones, restricciones de horarios, y tener más transparencia con el pago y que regresen las propinas. Grubhub es la única compañía que no removió la propina al inicio. Esto nos deja en claro que DoorDash y Uber lo hicieron con la única intención de afectar nuestros ingresos. También apoyamos la buena intención de otras propuestas de leyes que sin protecciones contra las desactivaciones, lo único que van a lograr es generar más desactivaciones. Necesitamos protecciones con las desactivaciones para evitar retaliaciones que nos hacen las compañías, ya que cada día los trabajadores sufren de diversas represalias. Gracias.
So we are grateful to council member and also the chair for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here in support of Intro 737 and 738, which focuses on tip transparency. I have witnessed how DoorDash have made it harder for consumers to tip with the sole intention to hurt our pockets and protect their interests. This week, DoorDash sent us a communication threatening us to eliminate the tipping if these bills are approved. The communication email is full of lies, clearly sent to all deliveristas with the sole intention of creating division, confusion. I'm including in my testimony a copy of that email for your reference. DoorDash's attitude is an insult and is a demonstration that these apps don't care about us and will continue to threaten and treat us as disposable labor without rights and without protections. Despite their attacks, the division they're creating, the misinformation campaign, we will continue to fight for more rights and protections, and we urgently need deactivation protections, tip transparency, pay transparency throughout this process. Grubhub is the only company that did not remove the tipping, which clearly is example that Uber and DoorDash did this intention with the sole intention to reduce our earnings. We grateful with the other bills, Intro 030, 0970, 715, which we support, but without deactivation protections, it would only hurt us and create more deactivations causing many of us to lose our jobs. We look forward to working with you, especially to create, together to be able to fight together to make this job safer and better for all.
Thank you so much. I have a number of questions. So I just want to make sure I understood you correctly. The copy of the email that DoorDash sent is part of the testimony so that it will be provided to the committee. Thank you. That's very helpful. In terms of safety information that the companies are giving, what information are they giving to workers, and what do you feel is the best way for them to give safety information to workers?
Nos han mandado unos flyers de cómo usar las vías y todo, pero nos falta más todavía. Nos faltan infraestructura, nos falta que den equipos más de seguridad, no sé, este, nos faltan muchas cosas. Como somos contratistas independientes, nosotros tenemos que hacer gasto de todos, cascos, protecciones de un buen pantalón cuando hay lluvia, cuando hay nieve. Todos esos gastos nosotros los tenemos que, como contratistas independientes, comprar de nuestros bolsillos.
So what I have seen is that they have sent us a flyer, but that's not enough. We need to make sure that there is infrastructure, but also we need to make sure that as independent contractors, we need, we are, it is important to know that we are responsible of all the operating costs, from the devices, from the safety gear, from the safe equipment that we have to acquire, and somebody has to be responsible for that. And that's why we need to make sure that more is done.
Thank you very much. I just want to see if any of my colleagues have questions? Nope? Okay. Thank you so, ah, Councilmember Feliz.
Yeah, no questions, but just want to thank all of you for all the work you do. You know, we in the city council, we do very important work, and we could only do it right when we work with people like all of you. Work with all of you and also listen to all of you. So just want to thank you for all the work you do, doing a great job amplifying the voices and the needs of delivery workers, and great speaking with all of you as well about Intro 38. I look forward to working together to add those additional protections that all of you mentioned. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Councilmember, now Councilmember Abreu.
And to the deliveristas, you already know where I stand on the issue. You know that I'm with you at every step of the way. I feel very, very confident that we'll get these through. So thank you for everything that you're doing. Keep up the faith. Keep speaking for yourselves. And again, I hope that what we can do as the councils can improve the lives of you and your families.
Thank you.
Thank you. Y si se puede.
Thank you very much. I'll now call up the next panel. Paul Zuber, Brianna January, bear with me, Justin Nelson, Millie Seiler, and Dari, sorry, it's hard to read, Saldana, I believe it is. Okay, please begin.
Good morning, Chair, esteemed committee. For the record, Brianna January with Chamber of Progress and strong support of Intro 762. Chamber of Progress is a tech industry coalition promoting technology's progressive future and inclusive access for all to that future. I'll note that while our corporate partners do include tech innovators like DoorDash, Grubhub, and Uber Eats, they do not have a vote or veto on our positions. That said, Chamber of Progress is in strong support of Intro 762, and we thank the good bill sponsor for putting this compromised approach forward. Importantly, committee, restaurant associations across the country have supported similar measures in other major cities and even helped inform the suggested cap update here. My industry colleagues explained the mechanics of the bill, and you do have a copy of our written testimony, so I won't be repetitive, but I do just want to emphasize that Chamber of Progress's support is really based on the city's small businesses and consumers alike. Committee, New York's independent restaurants, under New York's, under 762, New York's independent restaurants will have access and flexibility that could be transformative. Small businesses are more likely to benefit from marketing and visibility on these delivery platforms, which in turn would then help level the playing field with widely known chain restaurants. And consequently, we believe that this would ultimately help lower prices for consumers that are living in and visiting New York City alike. For these reasons and for the benefit of New York's consumers and small businesses, Chamber of Progress encourages you to pass Intro 762's compromise approach, and I thank you for our time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Chair Menon and members of the committee. On behalf of the Bronx Chamber of Commerce, please accept this testimony in support of Intro 762 legislation that would amend the city's price control on third-party food delivery. We support the bill because it will promote the success of local restaurants in New York City and will help ensure they have access to the products and services they need to reach new customers and grow their businesses. The Bronx Chamber of Commerce is rooted in holistic community and economic development in which advances economic opportunity and growth, innovation, and comprehensive business planning for the Bronx. Intro 762 will help local businesses. Passing this bill is a critical to supporting restaurants who need options for delivery, marketing, and advertising. Third-party delivery apps have proven to be valuable to the restaurant industry, allowing these businesses to meet customers where they are or take advantage of new opportunities to increase their revenue. The city's current law undermines the freedom that business should enjoy to choose best way to make themselves successful through these tools. We badly need reform to help businesses regain this control and support their growth. Unfortunately, the city's existing policies does the opposite, and instead of incentivizes two outcomes, increases customers' costs or reducing the products and services that restaurants can access. Either result hurt both businesses and workers by reducing sales. Unfortunately, other regulations on food delivery are already having this effect. The higher consumer costs that the city, other laws have caused have already suffered millions of loss and orders of hundreds of millions of dollars in sales. This not only hurts the bottom line of local businesses, delivery workers also suffers from loss of work opportunities. Maintaining the status quo with respect to the price control will exacerbate these problems and furthermore undermine the ability to grow their businesses. New York City law presents needless risks with no benefits. While many cities enacted price controls on food delivery in response to the pandemic, almost none still have those laws today. Most of these cities, counties, and states eliminated price controls entirely.
Okay, I'm just going to ask you to wrap up, please, and you can submit your testimony.
It's time for New York City to also make reforms to eliminate risks that are entirely avoidable. If the current law is invalidated--
Okay, I'm sorry, you have to wrap up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next speaker, please. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Menon and committee members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am Millie Seiler. I'm here to testify on behalf of Sandra Jaquez, owner of Il Sol Restaurant in Manhattan and the head of New York State Latino Restaurant Association. I'm here to support the Intro 762, a local law that establishes exemptions from limits on fees for third-party delivery services. During the pandemic, restaurant owners needed the city's third-party delivery platform fee cap. We were scared and dependent on delivery services and needed protection from high fees. However, we find ourselves at the moment now, when the pandemic is over and restaurants are looking for opportunities to market and grow their businesses through new and diverse customer base. By limiting the fees that platforms can charge restaurants, New York City has limited the services restaurants can access through those platforms. This is a problem for two reasons. First, restaurant owners should have the freedom to choose what's best for our businesses and customers. Second, digital platforms offer neighborhood restaurants like mine valuable digital marketing and advertising capabilities we couldn't afford otherwise. That helps us compete with big chain restaurants, which have big marketing budgets, and keep our businesses growing and thriving. Intro 762 works for both restaurants and third-party delivery apps. It shields restaurants from high delivery fees and offers us the option to choose if we would like to purchase additional marketing services from these delivery platforms. This bill is an improvement on last year's Intro 813, which I oppose because it didn't do enough to protect restaurants from fees. Finally, as the representative of NYS Latino Restaurant Association, I want to emphasize Intro 762 is the product of more than a year discussion--
Thank you. I'm just going to ask you to wrap up, please.
Thank you. We feel legislation is incredibly reasonable, strikes balance against safeguarding and supporting our restaurants. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and committee members. My name is Justin Nelson. I'm co-founder and president of the National LGBT Chamber of Commerce, better known as NGLCC and NGLCCNY. On behalf of the hundreds of LGBTQ+ restaurants and thousands of LGBT+ owned small businesses in New York City, I'm pleased to speak with you today about the small business benefits offered by third-party delivery platforms and urge your support of Intro 762. I would say if NGLCC were to survey our 30,000 affiliate member businesses nationwide, I'm confident that virtually all would prefer that the government limit fees that they can be charged for any and every product and service, except when they might choose to pay more. And why would a business owner ever choose to pay more for a product or service? The answer is easy. When services succeed and they want more services, they're happy to pay more. If I pay 5% of my revenue to advertise and those ads deliver a 20% increase in sales, then my next move is to try paying 6, 7, or 8% of my revenue and see if the results in sales growth and return on investment continue to grow. The odd thing about the delivery fee cap law is that it stops our member restaurants from paying more when they wish to pay more. Many members would say to the council, thank you for trying to help me by reducing my costs, but no thank you because I'd like to choose to pay these vendors more so they can provide more services. 762 will return that decision-making power to where it belongs with the business owner. Food delivery platforms build restaurant websites, license meal ordering software, offer in-app, and email promotions to restaurants that choose to use and pay for them. Small restaurants that can't afford traditional advertising and marketing agency services can offer and afford delivery firm services because they don't require payments in advance. Paying on a per order basis is an important option for restaurants, but the fee cap law stops restaurants from paying higher percentages of their order amounts for making services that restaurants desire. I cannot imagine that the council intended its restaurant protection efforts to hurt restaurants--
Okay, I'm going to ask you to wrap up.
And I encourage you to support 762. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
All right, I'm going to try to be short and sweet. My name is Paul Zuber. I'm the Executive Vice President of the Business Council of New York State. The Business Council is the largest statewide business organization in New York. We represent 3,200 members. We represent trade association, professional associations, pretty much all the local chambers in New York State, and a large amount of our members are either headquartered or doing business here in New York City. So we're here today to extend our strong support for Intro 762. We think that this bill is a win-win solution. Restaurants will win because the cap on delivery fees will remain in place, the strongest in the nation. They will win because the marketing services portion of the fee cap will be repealed, empowering restaurant owners to choose how to spend or not to spend their advertising and marketing dollars. One of the things that we've been looking at in, at the Business Council, one of the things that really concerns us is cost of living. I think there was a poll a couple of months ago from Ciena, which talked about cost of living, and it polled New York residents, 62% of New York-- of New York residents said that cost of living is either destroying their lives or having a great impact on their lives. This bill is vitally important for the consumers. Let's not, their litigation is going on, we all know that. If the delivery apps win, then we go back to the wild, wild west. If they lose, then we've already seen data, and we've seen data from the Business Council, that the delivery apps are not making money like we think. They're losing money. There's the fear that it could cause increased costs for consumers. There's a fear that the delivery apps could give up on New York City and simply leave. So we think that this bill is a compromise solution that works, that helps business, that helps consumers, and that's why we strongly support the legislation.
Thank you very much. Okay, Councilmember Feliz.
Thank you. Just a quick question. So earlier, Councilmember Salamanca asked about groups that are supporting the fee cap bill. Just curious, maybe the New York City Latino Restaurant Bar and Lounge Association, I know you were one of the groups that were initially opposed, but now you're supporting the new version. So just curious, what parts of the bill made you get to ask?
So, I understand that our friends at NYC Hospitality also brings that to light. However, due to the fact that we're different associations and our members are completely different demographics, our association actually, we determined our decision to support this because our members are minority-owned small businesses who don't have the marketing resources or advertising budgets to compete with higher top-tier restaurants. You know, most of our members are in Upper Manhattan, bless you, Chair. Our, most of our members are in Upper Manhattan and certain areas in all the, in neighborhoods in all the five boroughs who, where we come in and we see the necessity that they need. And thankfully, with these third-party apps, they're getting the traffic that they don't get in person, but digitally. So that's why we support it.
All right, thank you.
Great. Thank you to this panel. I will now call the next panel. Haiyu Liu, Jian Hu, David Dimas, Jose Yos. Please come up. Thank you. Okay. Terrific. Thank you. Do you want to begin then? Yes. Okay. Great. Thank you. Please begin.
I, I will translate for him. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for giving me this variable opportunity to talk about the working condition of food-delivered worker. My name is Jian Hui. I come from China. I am a food-delivered rider in Frosing. In Frosing, thousands of food-delivered riders like me work day and night to make a living, to provide delivery service for the entire community. However, at our workplace, we face a lot of challenge, and today, I will focus on three main point. First, the platforms' working hour are not transparent. After the immunification of the minimum wage regulation, the platform does not clearly show our daily delivery hours, so we cannot calculate our delivery time and wage accurately. We hope that the platform can show the time of we accept order, the time we pick up, and then the delivery completion time for each order, so that we workers can verify our earnings. Second, the platform in purpose hide the tipping interface, significantly reducing our tip income. Currently, customers cannot easily tip us, and our tip income has dramatically decreased from 10 each day to almost zero. Furthermore, the platform does not include our waiting time and written time as our working hour, resulting in our very low actual hour wage. We work 10 and 12 hours every day and earning only 100 or 130 dollar each day. We strongly urge the platform do not hide the tipping interface.
Okay, I'm just gonna ask you to wrap up, please. Thank you.
I think we have two minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, because we translate, we have four minutes. Is that right?
Yes, yes, yes. Sorry, you have two more minutes. Thank you so much. Oh, you used four. Okay, so you do need to wrap up. Thank you.
Third, riders face high traffic rigs. The platform has shortened their working hours by increasing the number of orders. During the peak time, the riders we workers are often aside six or seven orders at the same time, and we have really limited time to complete each order.
I, I have to ask you to wrap up because we gotta give everyone the exact same time. So I'm gonna ask for the next speaker. Thank you. Yeah, and please submit the written testimony. Yes. So thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Jose Yos. Soy miembro del proyecto de justicia laboral. Trabajo como deliveryista hace tres años y me he dado cuenta de los problemas que enfrentamos yo y muchos de los trabajadores en esta industria. Hoy quiero hablar acerca de tres legislaciones que para nosotros son muy importantes. La seguridad en la calle, la cual es esencial no solo para los trabajadores sino también para nuestra comunidad. Parte importante de esto es reconocer que las bicicletas eléctricas son nuestro medio de transporte y es como ofrecemos el mejor servicio a todos los neoyorkinos. Pero a veces vemos que la ciudad no cuenta con la influencia, infraestructura, tecnología como estaciones de carga seguros o espacios de descanso donde como los trabajadores nos veamos valorados pero también respetados y reconocidos por la ciudad. Este trabajo para mí es muy peligroso y no contar con calles más seguras para todos los que hacen, los que hace más fácil y por eso hoy estoy apoyando esta legislación. También quiero enfatizar en la necesidad de tener la propina, la cual para esta industria es parte importante de nuestra economía, la cual depende mi familia y la de muchos. Nuestros clientes se sienten muy agradecidos por nuestro valioso esfuerzo, pero las aplicaciones como DoorDash y Uber Eats han modificado esta opción colocándola al final y ahora nuestra ganancia se han visto muy afectadas. Este año también ha sido difícil entender el pago semanal en la aplicación. Siempre trato de entender cuánto he ganado durante la semana, pero la aplicación no ofrece suficiente información para poder extender las ganancias y esto dificulta la transparencia que debía existir a quien como trabajador le prestó un servicio. Por este, por lo anterior, me gustaría apoyar a la legislación, la cual beneficia a muchos trabajadores pero también a nuestra comunidad, ofreciendo vías más seguras entre peatones y vehículos, en dos ruedas, y apoyar para que también las aplicaciones de alguna manera tomen la responsabilidad de ofrecer transparencia, mejores beneficios para nosotros los trabajadores, los cuales merecemos condiciones y calidad de vida. Muchas gracias.
I'm gonna try to summarize as fast as possible. So my name is Jose Josh and I'm a member of Workers Justice Project, and I'm also been doing delivery for the last two years. And we face many issues in this industry, and we strongly support the three legislations that talks about tipping, particularly since many consumers have been actually wanting to recognize our work by tipping us. But we'd have seen how the apps are making it really hard to tip. And we also support other legislations that it's about making our work safer. And we also want to mention that and recognize that e-bikes are our main mode of transportation. And this is how we're able to actually provide our service to other New Yorkers. We want to, this year has been also very hard to understand the minimum pay and how apps are paying us. And we want to be able to have more transparency, being able to understand how our earnings are done. And that's why we want to also be able to support legislation that mandates more pay transparency. We're supporting these legislations because we know it will benefit workers in our community, and also we want to see more infrastructure, bike lanes, and also being able to offer more transparency to many of us who are doing this work so we can improve our working conditions and have a better life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Si, buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es David Dimas, miembro de la organización de deliveryistas unidos y trabajo como repartidor para la aplicación de DoorDash en el área de Queens. Antes que nada, me gustaría agradecerles por invitarnos al evento del día de hoy. También agradecerle a la ciudad, los medios de comunicación presentes que hacen eco nuestra voz, y a todos los involucrados por el apoyo recibido para que el salario mínimo a trabajadores de reparto fuera una realidad. Se ha avanzado mucho sobre este tema, pero no ha sido suficiente. Ya que hemos recibido mucho hostigamiento por parte de las aplicaciones, hablo de DoorDash en mi caso, de la cual yo formo parte. Ejemplo, esta aplicación cambia la hora para programar nuestros horarios sin previo aviso. De tres de la tarde que está en su plataforma oficial, lo pasó a seis de la mañana sin previo aviso, lo regresó a las tres. El día martes, los horarios los soltó a las 3:45 y así. Esto es un ejemplo de varios. Pero lo que nos reúne el día de hoy es que pedimos a dichas aplicaciones sean más claros con nosotros respecto a la desactivación de cuentas. Ya que tengo compañeros que les han desactivado sus cuentas sin una explicación personal y detallada, solo un correo en automático por el algoritmo de, que fue por una sospecha o, o por una queja del cliente, no? Y también pedimos, como ya lo repitieron muchos compañeros, que la opción de propinas del cliente sea como antes, que sea al momento de hacer la orden y no al finalizarlo, ya que eso repercute directamente en nuestros bolsillos, nuestros ingresos. Y por último, también más transparencia respecto a los pagos. Es lo único que pedimos. Muchas gracias.
So my name is David Dimas and I'm a member of Los Deliveryistas Unidos and I also work for DoorDash in the, in the area of Queens. I want to say thank you so much for all the, for you, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak and for all the people who are present here for allowing us to testify today. First of all, I want to say thank you so much for the support about minimum pay, and thank you for making this a reality for us workers. And we have been able to advance a lot, but it's not enough. We have received consistently harassment and have been working in a hostile environment caused by these apps who have now been able, who have now been changing our scheduling systems. He was sharing his own experience how they have continuously moved the scheduling systems. Now they have to wake up at six o'clock in the morning, sometimes have people have set three o'clock in the morning order, just in order to get some hours of work. But they also make these changes without enough notice in advance. And this is just one example of how these apps are behaving. And we're here today to actually talk about how we want to demand more respect from these apps. But we also want to be able to get some deactivation protections because we have seen how many of my colleagues are being deactivated, which means losing their jobs, without enough information, without enough notice, and very often, just with small details that there is some suspicion of something that we don't know what it is. We want to see the tips, we want the tips to be back to what it used to be before, making it easier for consumers to tip. And also, we want to make sure how these apps can be more accountable, especially understanding how they're paying us. So we can ensure that our, we can understand how we're paid, but also forcing these companies to be more transparent and more respectful to us as workers. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. Thank you so much. Okay, I'm gonna thank you. Call the next panel. Thank you very much. Okay, next panel. Beatrice Ajaro, Yusef Mabarez, Kayon Flowers, Robert Lee, Brian Lozano. Please come forward. Great. Thank you. Please begin.
Good morning. My name is Kovon Flowers and I work as delivery partner for food delivery apps in New York City. I've been doing this for the past six years. I mostly deliver in neighborhoods in Brooklyn and Queens. Thank you for allowing me to share my perspective today on improving the industry and opportunities for workers like me. First, I want to applaud and thank the city council and city hall for their advocacy and action supporting delivery workers, including the recently enacted new minimum wages. I want to thank the apps for implementing them. It has made a significant difference for me and many families. What has also been critical to how I support my family is the flexibility of this job, including what hours I can work, as well as customer tips. Both of these have been threatened and will continue to be impacted if this amendment empowering and protecting small restaurants is not passed. These impacts have already begun. Many of my fellow drivers I speak with have seen fewer opportunities in recent months. Some are waitlisted on some of the platforms, and many, and many have reported reduced tips as a result of costs being passed on to customers. Everyone wants to be paid fairly. That is easily to understand. And most New Yorkers agree that many hardworking but low-income professionals in the service industry deserve to be paid more. But higher wages mean higher costs for any business and, in any case, of delivery apps. The council imposed restrictions on what they can charge restaurants for marketing means higher prices for consumers. And I, like most, increase in, increases in price that means fewer purchases.
Thank you. I'm just gonna ask you to wrap up, please. And you can submit the written testimony.
Um, I'll submit.
Great. Thank, thank you very much. Okay, next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Yusef Mabarez and I represent the Yemeni American Merchants Association. At YAMO, we believe merchants and small businesses are catalysts for positive change in the US. Since our founding in 2017, our mission has been to empower our community through outreach, education, and support, helping- helping Yemeni Americans build a brighter future. Today, on behalf of our merchants and restaurant owners, I'm here to express our support for INTRO-762. This bill establishes additional support for our merchants to improve their operations and sales the way they choose to. Before the pandemic, third-party delivery services were already becoming a crucial part of our business. The pandemic drastically accelerated this trend, making delivery services essential for the survival of many of our restaurants and merchants. The fee cap implemented at the time was vital in preventing third-party delivery services from exploiting the vulnerability of our restaurants. For YAMA, this cap acted as a necessary guardrail for the industry. As the restaurant industry slowly recovers and social media explodes, the environment for restaurants and merchants continues to change. It is now necessary to revisit and adjust the fee caps to ensure continued growth in this new landscape. We believe this bill strikes a balanced approach, offering necessary protections to restaurants while allowing third-party delivery services to operate fairly. It's about putting this decision back into our merchants' hands. It's no secret that marketing is key when trying to stand out in a sea of similar businesses so close together in New York City. Furthermore, the bill encourages innovation and competition among third-party delivery services by establishing a framework that balances the interests of all stakeholders, promotes a diverse range of delivery options, which ultimately benefits consumers through better service and pricing. The flexibility and safeguards introduced by the bill will help-
I'm going to ask you to wrap up, please.
We asked the New York City to pass INTRO-762 as it supports our local restaurants, ensures a fair and equitable market for third-party delivery services. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Beatrice Higero. I own a Neji which serves West African cuisine and is located in Astoria, Queens. Thank you for supporting New York restaurants and for the opportunity for us to share our voice, especially those of us that are small, independent, and may only have one location. The pandemic was obviously hard for all of us, but even as we recovered, other challenges such as inflation have been very, very difficult. We work extremely hard for every dollar we earn. I am testifying today to ask you to support the legislation to amend the current cap that will allow for more choices for restaurants like mine, but also preserve important protections, protections that have gotten stronger with this version of the bill. This is a point I'd like to stress. The proposed solution has gotten better because of continued discussions where a variety of voices like mine were heard. I've never been too involved in advocacy, but I know that that is how democracy should work. The restaurant delivery fee cap was a very good idea during the pandemic. But because the cap also applied to optional marketing services, it has prevented me from exploring and choosing options that may work better for my restaurant and trying to get more customers. This may be an obvious point, but it's one everyone should understand. I don't have millions or even thousands of dollars to put towards a marketing budget, unlike some of the big brands that are in my neighborhood. And I don't have a marketing department and I don't have an advertising firm. What is most helpful about the delivery platforms is that they allow me to spend marketing dollars as I go, rather than making me commit to a big upfront investment. They also allow me to explore what works best for my business and make changes at any time. That's something I can't do if I took out a traditional ad, even if I could afford that. The main point is flexibility and allowing restaurants to make decisions for themselves rather than being constrained. While big chains have unlimited options, I may not be the most tech-savvy person, but the platforms enable us to figure out what works best. We just need the ability to do so. The proposed amendment not only keeps the delivery fee caps just the way it is, but it will also maintain a maximum for marketing fee cap, so I can pay more if I choose, but it won't be unlimited. I know that my experience, I'll wrap up here. Sorry, Jim. I know that my experience may not reflect that of every restaurant, but I appreciate this opportunity to share my perspective and thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next speaker, please.
Hi, good afternoon, Chairman and then committee members. My name is Robert Lee. I grew up in Queens, a child of Korean immigrants who were looking for a better life for their kids. And in part because of my own personal experiences of growing up food insecure, in 2013, I started an organization called Rescuing Leftover Cuisine to rescue excess food to those facing food insecurity. In 2019, I also started Tada Noodles because outside the Korean markets, there weren't any places serving Korean-Chinese cuisine such as Jajamyeon. And Tada Noodles is located on Borden Avenue in Long Island City and we were growing and now we have 12 employees. And a big reason for our growth is delivery platforms. And so I'm here to ask you to support 762 and give me the ability to spend more marketing money on the platforms that send me so many customers. Delivery apps are really important to us because they help us reach new customers and our food and flavor of both of us is very unique. And we need that marketing help because so many people have never tried Jajamyeon, Jampong, or Kampunggi. And when they try it, they love it. One great thing about the apps' marketing platforms is that we only have to pay if we only get orders. So no orders means no fees and that's a great deal for me. I'm very happy that this amendment keeps the delivery fee cap intact and opens the marketing services fee, so I'm protected on the delivery services and I have more marketing choices. I'm always happy to work with GrowUp because they were such strong supporters of restaurants during the pandemic. They've ensured that restaurants can stay open and serve a critical need during difficult times. And GrowUp has also been very much in the community and supported and even helped create partnerships with organizations such as RLC, so that the NYPD, Harlem Giants, and things like that, where children are just not getting enough nutrition that they need. But I'm testifying today because it's my restaurant and should be my choice on how to spend my marketing money. It's just that simple, so please support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Councilmember Fleas. Tech NYC is a nonprofit organization representing over 800 technology companies in New York. We are committed to ensuring that the tech sector remains a leading driver of the city's overall economy and that all New Yorkers can benefit from innovation. Delivery platforms are significant contributors to the tech sector and local economy through their offices and employees by helping businesses access more customers and providing earning opportunities to thousands of New Yorkers. During the COVID-19 pandemic, when in-person dining came to a halt, building online ordering and delivery capacity was crucial for restaurants to stay open and remains in demand to date. In 2021, the city council passed legislation limiting delivery platform fees to 15% of an order and 5% of an order for marketing and other services. Today, the pandemic is no longer a public health emergency and in-person dining has returned, reversing the prior conditions. As new restaurants are opening across the city, many seek to utilize delivery platforms' marketing services, including data analysis, advertising, and custom websites. Tech NYC supports INTRO-762, which would ensure that restaurants continue to have access to low-cost delivery and marketing options by removing the cap on marketing service fees while maintaining the cap on delivery service fees. Introduction 30A would require restaurant and grocery delivery platforms to purchase new safety-certified e-bikes for delivery workers, but still overlooks many realities of food delivery by not defining which platform would be held responsible for these purchases and imposing the purchase requirement on platforms that are already paying $2.26 per hour to each worker to cover the cost of e-bike repairs and replacement. Tech NYC is also submitting written testimony for the reigning bills and the agenda today, and we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much and thank you to this panel. I'm now going to call the next panel. Jalil Fasta, Andres Hurtado, Wesley Feku. Please come forward. Okay, I'm just going to call the names again. Jalil Fasta, Wesley Feku, Andres Hurtado. Okay, not here. Okay, I will go on to the next panel then. Edward Hatchett. Joseph Mealy. Sharon Brown. Roel Rivera. Please come forward. Yeah, and if people have not heard their name called and they wish to testify, please fill out a form with the Sergeant at Arms. Because this is our last panel unless, before we go to the Zoom public testimony. Thank you. Okay, please begin.
Hello, my name is Ed Hatchett. Thank you for offering a chance to submit my testimony on these bills before the committee today. I think it's important for you to hear about the wide range of experiences I have had recently before implementing even more changes. I started making deliveries with DoorDash in March of 2019, two months after I started going back to college to further my education. However, as my need continued to grow, so did my commitment to dashing. Even better, I could choose when I was able to make deliveries that fit around my school schedule in order to fulfill my dream of becoming, getting a job as a full-time accountant. Simply, it was working for me. Unfortunately, since the new minimum pay rules took effect, I've seen a steep drop in orders and opportunities for dashing because they have become more narrowly, more scarce. While I loved being able to grab my bike and pick up orders around Williamsburg, now I have to go into Manhattan in hopes of finding any offers. Sometimes I would only get one order a day or I can't even get on the app to schedule a slot to dash. At the same time, delivering on an e-bike has been a great way for me to quickly and easily pick up deliveries. But it seems like the proposed new rules around e-bikes would make it difficult for delivery apps to make the option as widely available for workers like me. If I'm not able to use my bike for making deliveries, I'm not sure how I could continue using this as a way to make money at all. What's clear from years of doing these deliveries with DoorDash is that these needs to be balanced. It has to, it gets too expensive for customers to place orders and that means there are fewer opportunities for me to earn. While I would appreciate the council trying to support delivery workers like me, I am worried that proposed-
I'm just going to ask you to wrap up, please. Thank you.
I would ask that new, worried that proposed new requirements will ultimately end up hurting us in the long run. That's why I oppose these bills and would worsen the experience that the existing rules have had for food delivery workers in the city.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Sharon Brown. Release the hostages, let Yahweh's people go. I'm just remembering Israel. Okay, based on the business and the tax, oh, I didn't put that on. Oh, I said, release the hostages, let Yahweh's people go, remember Israel in everything you do daily. Based on the business tax bracket of each business, I believe the fees should commiserate with that. They should have a competitive scale for how they price their fees so that people in big businesses and people in small businesses can make money and also the apps that are providing the service can make money. It should be competitive for them. If they have someone making $100,000 a year, their fee should not be the same as a company making $1 billion a year and they are both using the same services like whatever delivery service that they have out there that's popular. Do you know any name of?
DoorDash.
Door, like DoorDash. If a company that's making $100,000 a year is paying a certain fee and a company that's making $8 billion for food is paying the same fee, there should be a scale based on how much deliveries they're making, how many, how much are the items on the menu, different things like that. I believe that we should make sure that they are not forcing tips on people. The tips should come after the fact. It should never be before. You don't know what the service is like. There's no standard for service if you pay a tip already. It could make someone want to do a better job. That could seem to be the possibility. But if you get bad service and you've already paid, what do you do?
Okay, I'm just going to ask you to wrap up.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, next speaker, please. The red light is on, then it's working.
Hi, my name is Joseph Mealy. I want to thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak here, being heard surrounding the third-party delivery platforms. I've worked many different jobs. I had a career in software and I've noticed as an older person, it's very hard for me to get work now. And also during the pandemic, I used my pandemic memo to get a paralegal cert too at Stony Brook. But I haven't been able to land an interview and it was all because basically a lot of age discrimination. So DoorDash has given me an opportunity to work whereas I would not have otherwise. And it's made me be able to pay my bills and I'll be able to support myself. The gig economy is very important to me. And I'm concerned about the 737 and 738, which can make my experience in New York even worse than last year where I sat for a long time not getting a single order. And so, you know, I appreciate the city council's attempts to help the worker, help the DoorDasher. But I find that, you know, tipping culture has changed in this country. They've been questioning, should we even tip waiters and waiters, waitresses today, that they shouldn't get paid a full wage. It's not the same as it was years ago. And I've noticed too that people get insulted if you ask for a tip. So what I do, I say to people, hey, you know, tips are not necessary, but they're appreciated, you know? Give me five stars, you know? And I notice I get a positive reaction, I get good reviews, and I get tips, you know? And so it's that type of attitude. When you have a tip in front, it doesn't give you that same, it gives you like, oh, and people I think will get their hackles up. And that's basically the sound of it. And I appreciate, you know, more tips, obviously. And by hurting the gig economy, you hurt people like me who can't get a traditional job.
Okay, I'm just going to ask you to wrap up, please.
Well, thank you and thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you very much. Okay, and last speaker on the panel.
Humans first, technology second, today, tomorrow, forever. Humans first, technology second. Humans first, technology second. Excuse me, I messed up here. I'm very upset. We're trying to get a meeting with you and you are not responding. The email that we got from your office was, no, you don't want to sit down and meet with us. The real problem is INTRO-890 and INTRO-2294. The status of the independent worker is not being respected. That's why you have all these problems and all these complaints. We're even complaining about tips. You gotta respect the independent worker. 32BJ, Jessica Ramos, Amy Gallagher, and maybe yourself. Don't respect the independent worker. You gotta, you gotta respect the independent worker. Are you willing to sit down and meet with us? Are you willing?
First of all, you're the one testifying, so this is not a Q and A.
I'm asking you.
This is not a Q and A.
But I'm asking you. I asked you outside in the street. But I'm asking you. I'm asking if you're willing to sit down and meet with us.
We have responded to your request. If you want to continue, your two minutes.
So if you don't want to, if you don't want to sit down and meet with us, then we're going to come out to your district and we're going to protest right in front of your office. And we're going to let the district know that you don't stand with the workers. That's what we're going to let them know.
Okay, and our last speaker on the Zoom, we have two more speakers on the Zoom. Christopher Leon Johnson and Dora Val Silva. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Christopher Leon Johnson. I'm currently at the UN, so anybody, any clown at Transalp want to say that, oh, I was, I was at City Hall and again at Ligia and all those clowns at LDU, I was not there. I'm in the UN right now, so don't lie. So let me keep it real with this bill, right? The bill is a joke. You know, Sean O'Brae, bro, like, I don't know what happened to you, bro. Like, you're the last person I expected to deal with these bozos. These people are frauds. They're not, they're not deliveristas. They're lobbyists. They work for Transalp. They work for Open Plans. This bill is bad because what's going to happen is if this bill goes through, the app's going to retaliate by implementing rules like E-Verify and I9s to start really locking these guys out of the apps. Like, yeah, these guys deserve their tips, but the apps are retaliating because you guys pushed the minimum wage law. Now, like I said, Ligia is a fraud. Gustavo's a construction worker. Tough Tony is a tough, is a tough guy who tried to fight us outside City Hall because we had the right to record in a public street. We got it all on video. These guys are thugs. These guys are criminals. These guys are fake. Where is the money that the city council gives to Ligia Galapagos nonprofit, Third Circuit, England, Los Angeles? There's no track record of how much money all these guys get paid. I'm against these bills because LDU is for these bills. If it was another organization that was for these bills, like Make the Road New York or, what's the other one? Locamena or like the Vision Freedom Fund or the NYC, I would not be on this panel. I'd say, all right, you know what? They want minimum wage, give them minimum wage. But because Ligia Galapagos fake self, fake self, fraud self is on this bill, supporting this bill, I'm not for it. Sean O'Brae, do not make the mistake like your coworker, Marjorie Valespas, did and supported these guys. Look what happened to Marjorie Valespas, Sean. She lost her job and she lost her marriage because of LDU. She was supporting LDU and didn't even come out and knock on doors for her, for her. And she lost her Christmas memorato and look.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker on Zoom is Dora Val Silva. Thank you. And the next speaker on Zoom is Dora Val Silva.
Hello, can anyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello, good morning. My name is Dora Val Silva. I work as a delivery partner for delivery apps here in New York City. I have been doing this for three years. I mostly work for the neighborhoods of Manhattan and Brooklyn. And thank you for allowing me to share my perspective today on improving the industry and opportunities for workers like me. So I want to thank, you know, the city council and the city hall for their, you know, for their advocacy and the actions to try to support delivery workers. It's very welcome. I'm here to support the approval of this amendment because it empowers and in a way protects like small restaurants. And this directly impacts negatively affects my flexibility to have this job and the earnings in forms of, in form of customer tips. Like, this impact is being, like, it'd be happening for a while. Like, there's a lot of fellow, fellow delivery drivers I speak with. They're like, we've been seeing fewer opportunities, fewer delivery opportunities, like, many people waitlisted, reduced tips, and because of this, this, the costs are being passed to the customer side. Like, people can agree that, you know, hardworking, low-income professionals in the, in the service industry deserve to be paid more. This is common sense. Like, people deserve a proper, a proper wage. But like, sometimes higher wages mean higher costs, higher costs for businesses. And in the case of delivery apps, these imposed restrictions came to like, you know, to help the restaurants market inside the app. They, they end up making the prices go up. And, you know, and higher prices lead to less purchases, less delivery opportunities, and fewer tips.
Time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. I'm now going to read, there are several people who signed up on Zoom. We just want to make sure that we did not miss you. So if you're here, please identify yourself. Anna Prince, Jenny Alcantara, and Deidre O'Neill. If you are on Zoom, please let us know. Okay, if there's anyone else in the room that did not testify, that wishes to testify, please come right now and see one of the Sergeant-at-Arms. Okay, not seeing anyone. We are going to close the hearing. I want to thank everyone for their testimony. We had great testimony today. It was incredibly informative and helpful to us. As, you can give your testimony, sir, to the Sergeant-at-Arms. It was incredibly informative and will certainly help us as we work through these bills. So thank you so much for coming. The hearing is now closed.